Good evening, everyone, and welcome to Harrisburg City Council Public Hearing and Work Session. My name is Wanda R. D. Williams. I'm the Chair and all of City Council members. Today is Tuesday, April 6, 2021. Mr. Petrowski, please do the roll call in just a minute. I'm calling this meeting to order our hearing to order at 5:30 PM. Now, Mr. Petrowski, please do the roll call.
Mr. Allen?
Present.
Ms. Bowers?
Present.
Ms. Daniels? Ms. Green? Mr. Madsen?
Here.
Mr. Majors?
Here.
Ms. Williams?
Present. Thank you, Mr. Petrowski. Ms. Green is not available this evening. She had a personal emergency, so she will not be present, so she is excused. We now will move on to the public hearing tonight. The public hearing will start with the Public Works Committee, and the Committee Chair is Mr. Majors. I would now turn over the meeting to Mr. Majors. Good evening.
Sorry. Good evening. Tonight, we have a public hearing, and if, see, we have the sonographer on and Ms. Baldock. Kurt, if you wouldn't mind reading the bill into the record, I'm trying to pull up my agenda.
Yeah, no problem. Bill 3 of 2021 is an ordinance vacating and striking from the official map of the city of Harrisburg, various unnamed paper streets, Kelker Street, and Walker Alley within the block bounded by Boyd Street, North Fifth Street, Riley Street, and Fulton Street pursuant to Chapter 3-109 of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Harrisburg.
Thank you. Is there anything else before we proceed? Mr. Knight, if you wanted to provide a brief explanation, then we'll turn it over to Ms. Baldock, so we can do an introduction of the individuals that may be participating and swear them in.
Sure. So, good afternoon, council members. The application here before you being heard at this public hearing, as Mr. Petrowski noted, is a street vacation related to Kelker Alley, Walker Alley, and various paper streets and/or rights-of-way. And this is in the block bounded by Riley Street to the south, Fulton Street to the west, Boyd Street to the north, and North Fifth Street to the east. And effectively, this project or this proposal is part of a larger project that we will also be discussing later today about regarding the lot consolidation and land development of a mixed-use building. And so this is kind of the first step necessary to vacate these public rights-of-ways that run through this project site in order to effectuate the consolidation and land development. And Kelker Alley is an east-west alley that runs between Fulton and North Fifth Street. Walker Alley runs north from Kelker Alley to Boyd Street, and then the little grocers' alleys kind of are throughout the property. But effectively, all of these rights-of-ways are paper streets. They're not used. There are some curb cuts around where these alleys meet the adjacent streets, but it's largely overgrown. It's pretty much impassable to any sort of vehicle, and therefore, they're of little value or use to the city or to the surrounding neighborhood. And so, the Planning Bureau and the Planning Commission both recommend that the Harrisburg City Council approve their request with the following conditions. If required by Capital Region Water or other utility providers, the applicant will execute easement agreements with those providers to allow access to and maintenance of existing infrastructure running through or along the right-of-way, or will have such infrastructure formally abandoned. And then the Planning Bureau would recommend that the applicant either coordinate with the City Engineers Office to preserve the existing granite curbs on-site for use elsewhere in the city or incorporate the existing granite curbs into the development in a way that highlights the unique asset. You know, granite curbs are pretty fairly rare, and so making sure either we're able to use them elsewhere in our rights-of-way or they can be incorporated into the design of the project would be a kind of neat way to maintain their presence on the project site. The Planning Bureau and the Planning Commission both recommend that the City Council approve their request for the following reasons. Although there are extant curb cuts, the existing rights-of-way are essentially paper streets running through a vacant block of property and are impassable to general vehicular traffic. As such, the vacation will not have any impact on traffic circulation, and then the proposed street vacation will permit the subsequent lot consolidation of the properties on the site, thereby allowing eventual development of a mixed-use building that will provide a variety of benefits to the neighborhood and to the city overall. And with that, I'll either turn it back to you, Councilman Majors, or to Ms. Baldock.
Okay, thank you. And do we have any of the individuals representing the project here to provide any additional comment?
Yeah, Councilman Majors Attorney Charlie Sur is on. I do not see the applicant, but he might just not be main.
I see, I see, I see. I think it's a meeting participant four, looks like. And if you can state your name, sir?
Kevin Baird.
Okay. And before we proceed, is there any additional folks that will be with you, Mr. Baird?
Gary Nalbandian is here. He is my partner, and I believe Greg Holtzman, my engineer from B&amp;L.
Okay, if those, yeah, all right, there's, I see Greg Holtzman. And if the other individual that will be participating can go on screen and change your name on the Zoom, so we have that for the record.
Okay.
And then we will. I see Greg Holtzman, it's Kevin Baird, and there's another.
Gary Nalbandian.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, I think that's, I see there, and then I guess we'll turn it over to the course sonographer, or you, Ms. Baldock, first.
Ms. Amanda Bach would please swear in the applicant's.
Will you all please raise your right hand? Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
I do.
Thank you.
Do we need verbal confirmation from all three? I think Mr. Nalbandian was on mute.
I don't think Mr. Nalbandian will be testifying at all.
Okay, all right. So I guess I will first turn it over to the attorney, and if he has any comment, or you, Mr. Baird, I don't know.
I'll start off. Good evening. My name is Charlie Sur, an attorney with Stevenson Lee here in Harrisburg. You're representing the applicant, which is 400 Riley Street Management, the Kevkar Holdco LLC. The summary that Jeffrey Knight provided was very thorough. This is a street vacation of some unused paper streets, and it's really related to the land development plan, which is later on in your agenda this evening. The vacation is necessary to allow the consolidation of these lots so that the land development plan can proceed. So the details of really what we're doing are really later on in the agenda for the land development plan. So we're really here to see if you have any questions concerning the application, the project. If you would rather defer that going towards the land development plan, we can do that. Kevin Baird can answer any questions you may have concerning the applicant, what his intentions are regarding the site. And Greg Holtzman also is here as our design engineer, allowed to go through any aspects of it, show you what the streets are, as well as the proposed project. Again, that will be available later on in the, in this evening's meeting. So other than that, we have nothing really to add to the report submitted by Mr. Knight.
Okay, thank you. I guess, all right, there's Mr. Baird. Mr. Baird, do you have anything additional that you want to add before I open up to questions from members of council?
I do not. I think, as my counsel stated, I think Jeffrey Knight gave a nice summation of the consolidation. Appreciate that.
Okay.
Majors, if I may, just for completion of the record before we proceed, if I could enter in an exhibit into the record?
Absolutely.
Okay. This is what I've identified as City's Exhibit A, and it consists of a true and correct copy of Bill Number 3 of 2021. Along with the bill, there is the petition to vacate the street, the sign by the applicants, the information sheet identifying the area to be vacated. Additionally, it contains the recommendation for approval by the Dolphin County Planning Commission, the recommendation for approval of the Planning Bureau, and finally, it also contains the resolution of the Harrisburg Planning Commission, which also recommends approval. Thank you, Chairman Majors.
Okay, thank you. So first out, I'm going to open it up to questions from my colleagues. I know we've had a similar, something similar where someone was looking to do a mixed-use development recently on another area, but I know there's been a lot of conversations around that, and since this is going to talk about housing and some additional spaces, first, I will start off, since the additional comments, excuse me, the additional resolution that deals with the land development plan will be in the Economic Development Committee. I'll start with Chair Mattson to see if he has any questions on the street vacation.
None particularly to the street vacation. Thank you. Look forward to seeing the final land development plan and, you know, hitting on the old familiar themes around MWB participation. If there's any sort of housing involved with the project, any affordability. But no questions at this point regarding into the resolution as it is now.
Okay, thank you. Next, I will go to Councilwoman Bowers. Do you have any questions on Resolu-, excuse me, Bill 3? Councilwoman?
No, thank you. I don't have any questions on Bill 3.
Okay. Go to Councilwoman Daniels. Do you have any questions or no comments?
I'm just glad Ms. Baldock could review the current standard of review again for us.
It is a discretionary action by City Council. As you know, you know, we do have the proposed street vacation legislation in front of you guys, but it has not been enacted yet, so there, you know, we haven't laid out formal requirements other than what's, you know, in the Third Class City Code, which as of this time, the petitioner has met the Third Class City Code requirements.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Vice President Allen?
I don't have any questions on this street vacation. Thank you.
Okay. President Williams?
Not on the street vacation, but where's the document for the quitclaim deed? I don't see a copy of that document in our packet.
President Williams, typically, I do not include the quitclaim deed in the packet. That just comes to the Law Bureau for review.
Can you have a copy of that when you get it?
Yep. I will note though that the legal description that would be in the quitclaim document is in the actual bill, and that starts at the bottom of page 3, and it continues on to page 4, and the top of page 5 is the legal description for the area to be vacated. But I will certainly forward you the quitclaim deeds.
Okay, I read that, but still, I want a copy. Thank you. No other questions, Mr. Majors?
Okay, thank you. So, again, I know on our previous, I just want to make sure. So all of the comments from all of the different approval agencies came back with no concerns, correct? Mr. Knight?
Yes, that's correct. I believe City Engineer indicated there were no comments, and I believe most of the other departments we had heard from, the Capital Region Water did note as a, as a comment that abandonment of any existing water or sewer lines on the site, there were, there are four buildings on the site, so there are probably laterals to those buildings, that any abandonment of any existing water or sewer lines must be coordinated with them. But, you know, I think they're just anticipate, I don't think they had anything specific that said, you know, look out for this or that, just whenever you're about to start breaking ground, talk to us so that we can discuss, you know, what infrastructure's in the ground and how to address it.
Okay, thank you. So I know we will be discussing the land development plan later in this meeting, but if you could just provide us with a brief overview of the project, because I think one of the larger concerns that has come out of a lot of our discussions around some of the, the plan development in, in that area is affordability. And I know that, you know, some of the projects are looking to take advantage of some of our, some of the other programs that they can afford themselves of in terms of LERTA. But if you can give us a little bit of, a little bit of context around the project that you're looking for us to provide this street vacation for.
Sure. So the overall project is going to be, as I noted, a mixed.
Sorry, I'm talking about the applicant, not.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Mr. Knight. Yeah, so if Mr. Baird or Mr. Sur want to provide a little bit more on, on that and some of the affordability piece, because I think, you know, we are, you know, no one here is against things improving and our city growing, but one of the major concerns that we raised and I think we'll be talking about in some other, in larger detail later tonight is around affordability as we, as the city is looking to grow, and there's some proposed development here in specific areas of our city.
Sure, I think Kevin Baird can talk about that. No, this is Charlie Sur. And if you're interested in seeing a copy of the, of the proposed building or the site plan, we can put that up on the screen if that would be useful, or if you just like, we can hold off on that.
That'd be, no, that'd be great to put up, and we can still revisit that later. But just for the public hearing, since members of the community that may want to speak to this, we'll have an opportunity if we can put that up here as well.
Sure. I'll ask if Greg Holtzman, if he can get the screen. And he should be prepared with some slides, which were shown to the Planning Commission, which will include a site plan as well as some building elevations, so you can see how the project fits, how it looks, and how it fits within the surrounding area. So if Greg could put those up. And then I would ask for Kevin to, Baird, if he can then address the affordability questions next. So let's start with Greg. If you could just describe what we're, what we're seeing on the first slide here.
Absolutely. The first slide here is a perspective. This is from Fulton and Riley Street. So Riley is to the front here. You'll see the Capital Fresh Markets. What you're seeing here is basically the residential apartments that is masking the interior, which is parking garages, and then to the rear, which is along the Urban Meadow or Boyd Street. Once again, more apartment buildings.
All right, if you go to the next slide, please.
Sorry, I gotta go the other way. This is another perspective. This is from Boyd and Fifth Street. So what you're seeing here is basically the elevation change, once again, building being wrapped with apartments. And this is Fifth Street. This is the sort of trash dumpster area, and then this is along the Boyd Street Alley. So we'll have a coffee shop and other amenities that we can talk about later.
Okay, next slide.
This is a perspective from Fifth and Riley, with Fifth Street being here and Riley here. Earlier, we looked at coming up the street, so once again, the apartments wrap the interior core, which is a parking garage, and the entrances to the parking garage are on this side and the opposite side.
Excellent.
These are building elevations, and I'll just flip through these quickly. This is the Boyd Street, so as someone, a pedestrian corridor is walking up through here, this is the perspective they'll see. This is apartments. There's a bike locker in here. This is also where the proposed cafe would be entering, exiting. This is another shot here. This is the Fifth Street elevation. So this is from, looking from Vartan's Building into the building, into our site. Once again, completely wrapped with apartments. And here's the entrance or exit from the garage, and then over here would sort of be the entrance to the restaurant that's proposed here on Riley Street. Flip to the next perspective. This is on Fulton Street, which is at the bottom of the site. Riley is over here to the right. This is our surface entrance, and then this is the parking garage entrance. This side will have visibility of the parking garage, but then you can see the apartments on the front and back. And I believe, and then finally, the last view here is from Riley Street. This is where the proposed grocery store is, and this is where the proposed restaurant will be. And then above it, mostly apartment units with some flexibility for commercial development, too.
Okay, do we have any 3D perspectives? The, the, sure, the greater, the greater area?
I can pull those up, but not with me currently.
Okay.
I think, I think, you know, some of those other images may be happening. I think could be presented during the Resolution 24. But with respect to the affordability piece, so what are some of the price points that are being proposed for, for this? Because again, I think, you know, one of our, one of the major concerns that has come out of our last public hearing on a similar proposal would be the number of units being proposed as well as the cost. Because again, you know, we are trying to deal with a few different issues here in terms of, you know, development and affordability for folks that may want to consider this as a potential place for them to live.
Sure.
What, Kevin?
So we have not, you know, really nailed down the rents yet. And the reason I say that is we don't have, you know, real construction budgets back. We have preliminary budgets back. And, you know, as, as many may be aware, I am packing on 214 additional parking spaces above and beyond what the code is requiring at a cost of about $28,000 a parking space. You can imagine, there's a huge gap in the budget here. We are value engineering, and we are trying to design a project that will ultimately be financeable. But in terms of, you know, affordable and workforce housing, I have teamed up with Doug Knight, you know, neighboring developer, his partner Dominic. We've met with HRA, we've met with Jeffrey Knight, spoke with, you know, certain council members informally, and, you know, the intention is to put a proposal together and deliver within the next couple of weeks to create workforce housing on a lot of the existing stock that HRA currently has. How much affordable housing or affordable rentals will be incorporated into the structure is largely, you know, a function of the finances right now. So I would like to, at a minimum, be able to provide 10% of the units toward affordable, but we have not landed on a place yet where we're comfortable with making a commitment.
Okay, thank you. And then I guess my follow-up question on, on that piece regarding affordable, what would, what would you be considered affordable, right? Because I think there's a, there's a large debate, you know, on nailing down what quote-unquote affordable means. I know there are a lot of folks, you know, that we work with, and I'm glad to hear that you're looking to partner with the redevelopment authority and even potentially the Housing Authority, but some of those are projects that are dealing with subsidized housing versus, you know, market-rate housing, which I'm assuming this is going to be market and/or above for our area. But there is a gap that, that exists, and I think you may have, you know, qualified that as workforce housing. But that gap of people that may not qualify for any subsidies in housing through the Housing Authority or, you know, some of the other programs that are there. But some of the rents that are, we're starting to see, that we're seeing now currently in, in that area as well as our, our larger statistical area are a little, are, seem to exceed what city residents can, can typically, the average city resident can afford. So, yeah, that's where I think, that's the, the area that we're looking at to help to address.
In terms of, you know, affordable units that we would offer, we would look to, you know, the county AMI, and I think the number that City Council wants to land on is 30% of one's income going toward rent. I mean, we would, we would be comfortable with those figures.
Okay, so, yeah, it looks like there's still some additional information that, you know, we may be able to have some conversations on moving forward, but, you know, if there are any other questions from members of council, I think we can up, all right, President Williams?
I have some question. I do have a question. You said 10% of the project you're looking at for affordable housing. How many units are you looking to have?
Anywhere from 80 to maybe 103, 105.
Oh, then you would mean that would be 10, 10% of that would be eight or 10 units, right?
Correct.
Okay. And you said you're looking to the county for the AMI, average median income? Well, 71% is low income in Harrisburg, so we can talk about that federal income. That was 30%. So what is exactly are you looking at for the rental?
So again, Council President, you know, we haven't worked through the construction numbers. We don't know what we can offer at this stage, but I would think, you know, for, if you want me to just sort of take a stab at it, I think we're looking around 1,100 for a one-bedroom. The affordable would probably be something more like 850 for a one-bedroom.
I can.
That's sort of where, you know, it just, just sort of giving you a good faith estimate.
Well, that's a good big guess, and that's, that sounds good to me. I do have a question. There is homes on that area on Fifth Street side, I mean, on the Riley Street side. So in order to make this project happen, are you using eminent domain to take those homes there?
Oh, no, no, we, we've got those under agreement. We've, we've made agreements to purchase with. There's only two.
Yeah, right there.
Private sellers, and then there is the land bank has two. Redevelopment Authority has the overwhelming majority, but then Harrisburg Community College has like seven lots along North Fulton.
Okay.
And we're going to acquire those lots from them, and then.
So you've already been in conversation, I've made those.
We're under agreement.
Okay.
We're ready to pull the trigger, Council President.
All right. I want to make sure you're ready for the trigger. I want to make sure that they're going to be compensated, because I know there's two houses there, and I, I know about the land development. I know that Harrisburg Community College owns that. I'm very familiar with that area. So I just want to make sure that they're going to be compensated for those, those two homes there.
Absolutely.
That's all the questions I have. Thank you, Mr. Majors, and thank you, Mr. Holtzman.
Thank you, Council President.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you. Excuse me, if we could, I guess we'll keep the screen sharing now. So are there any members of council that have any additional questions before I open it up for public comment? Okay, hearing none. One second here. Okay, I changed my view. Are there any members of the public that have any questions? If you do, I believe we can, if you're in the chat function on Zoom, you can raise your hand. And if either Mr. Petrowski or Ms., excuse me, Baldock could give the instruction for folks that may be on the phone on what they would need to do to raise their hand. Okay, are there going, going twice, are there any members of the public that have, would like to provide any comments on Bill 3? Please feel free to raise your hand.
If you have dialed in, you can use star nine.
Okay, and for a third time, are there any members of the public that would like to provide any comments or questions regarding Bill 3 of 2021? This is the street vacation. Feel free to raise your hand if you're in the Zoom chat or star nine if you're on the phone, so we can recognize you. Okay, and again, if there aren't any comments from any members of the public or any members of council further. So my request is that we will move forward with placing this on the agenda for our next legislative session. But I think I will provide the caveat that we will see how, any additional comments that come out of Resolution 24, anything that comes out of Resolution 24 that we may need to address prior to moving this forward, so. Anything that comes out of resolution twenty-four that we may need to address prior to moving this forward, so. With that, if there aren't any other comments, the public hearing for Bill Three is adjourned, and I will turn it back over to you, Council President.
Thank you, Mr. Majors. Again, is there any additional questions? This is the time to ask them before we move on with our hearing.
We do, we do have a one-hand raised now. Looks like, all right, I'll, so, all right, thank you. Let's see here, we have, it's like a Pamela Parsons. Let me see if I can. No, no, moment, you may have to unmute because I'm having some issues over here. Okay. We have Pamela Parsons, you are permitted, so if you could provide us with your name and address and then your comment.
Yes, it is Pamela Parsons, and my address is Holly Street, Eighteenth, near Eighteenth and Holly. My question is, what is the definition of workforce housing?
Yeah, that's a great question. Workforce housing is a tremendous program that I have had a lot of experience with in Philadelphia and a lot of success. What it is essentially, it's an opportunity for certain individuals who qualify to get homeownership, and they are able to purchase the home at a highly subsidized discounted rate. Right now in Pennsylvania, there's about eighteen thousand dollars available per purchaser for closing costs and costs associated with down payment for the program. And qualified persons who move forward with the transaction and purchase and occupy the home are required to stay in the home for ten years. They're required to keep up on all taxes, property taxes, and they're not allowed to lease or sublease the, the property. And if they successfully complete the tenure program, then they gain full ownership of the property. There is a lot of capital available through Community Reinvestment Act funds through different banks, and there's just a lot of programs, and I think it's a great way to really seed the midtown market, especially with all the abandoned lots with quality housing that's subsidized, that, you know, ultimately creates homeownership. We all know that homeownership has built the middle class in America, and lots of individuals have been denied that opportunity. So my focus, my mission and my company, my brokers that I founded, that we can talk about some other time, is very focused on creating homeownership for disadvantaged persons and all, all types of individuals that need a hand up. I like homeownership. Don't get me wrong. I know we need rentals, and we're going to create some. But my focus, Doug's focus, is going to be very much in creating homeownership opportunity along with affordable housing. So that's a long answer, but I'm passionate about it. And if you have any, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Oh, what kind of income levels are we talking about?
I think that's driven by county and city. So I know in Philadelphia, you know, Philadelphia underwent, obviously, a lot of, lot of development, and, you know, the police officers and, and teachers and all the, you know, key people in any given community were getting priced out. So workforce housing, you know, was a great source, you know, solution to that. I think in Philadelphia, in order to qualify, it's eighty percent of, of forty-five thousand, so I think it's like thirty, thirty-one thousand dollars a year, or thirty-six thousand dollars a year or under. So I'm, I'm not sure what the comparable income would be in, in Harrisburg, but I would think it would be close.
Okay, thank you.
And I just want to add that this is not an effort that I would be doing specifically. We're hiring a local MBE contractor who's going to manage this entire process. We're going to partner, we're going to support any way that, you know, they need us, capital, mentoring, financing, you name it. But, you know, we're going to create some opportunity for a couple of local MBE companies to manage and own much of this process.
Okay, so, well, thank you for, thank you for that. And it looks like I know Councilman Mads may want to interject here, but I just want to be, be clear, Mr. Bird, the workforce housing you're talking about would be separate and apart from anything dealing with this particular street vacation. Is that correct? Right now, you're, the, the street vacation is for what potentially would be coming out of a land development plan through resolution twenty-four, which is focused on parking garage space anywhere at, from your estimation, between eighty-five and a hundred and ten residential units. That would be for rentals and then some commercial space for a potential grocery store, restaurant, coffee shop, offices, et cetera. I just want to make sure that we're clear.
Yeah, in approximately five hundred and fifty parking spaces.
Okay, 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 thank you. So, a- again, this is, you know, that, that's a larger conversation around workforce housing, and I think we can have. I'm doing my best not to complete all of these, these issues, but, you know, as we're, we're discussing this, you know, my focus, it's intent to be on, on this, but, you know, this is something, these are more promises that we hear about, hey, you know, maybe next time we'll get you, and maybe next time we'll talk about MBE W E participation. Maybe next time we'll talk about ownership of MBEs or WBEs. And I personally, and I don't know how other councilmen treat it, like, I am, I, I'm tired of the promises and, you know, not, you know, having them being delivered on in our community. The, the, the positive thing I've heard, at least from the conversation that we're having on this, is you're looking at between eighty-five and a hundred and thirty units, and up to ten percent would be quote-unquote affordable. I know our goal is a lot higher, and I hopefully there's further discussion that we can have as we're moving forward through this process. But I know just for, you know, the folks on the, that are participating and Ms. Parsons who asked a question, there is some some research on workforce housing that's available online, as he mentioned. It's, I think a lot of that, what the goal of the workforce housing from a, you know, a HUD standard or even other programs is to try and tackle some of the same populations that I know Chair Bowers and, you know, Chair Madsen and all of us on council, quite frankly, are trying to help tackle as we're looking to get additional units online for folks is the folks that may not qualify for, you know, housing through a subsidized program. But and that term is still, not really in love with the term, but that's a term that's out there right now. But folks that, where we have, you know, some of the market rate apartments that are, or market rate units that may go online may potentially exceed what our, our city's median income is, since a lot of people are using the larger county or regional, you know, service, our regional MSA to base their their rents on. So, you know, I think there's still a lot of progress that can be made, and sorry for, you know, getting on the soapbox, but this is something I know all of us are very passionate about. So, but with that, before we proceed, Mr. Madsen, did you have any other comments if you want to?
Yeah, just real quick, Ms. Parsons, a tool that I use is the Pennsylvania United Ways Alice data. It specifically is a project that focuses on low to moderate income households. And just to give you some context, they even have a little handout here. I keep it with me when we have these conversations. And a single adult earning twenty-one thousand dollars a year to thirty-seven thousand dollars a year would be considered in that low to moderate income population. And a salary would be around, if you're at twenty-one thousand, it's ten dollars an hour. For the thirty-seven, you'd be at about eighteen dollars an hour. And then housing would roughly fall between six hundred dollars for a one-bedroom to nine hundred dollars, would be considered affordable per this data. I find it to be useful. It also breaks it down if it's a family as well. I will share the link in the attendees box, but I often use that as a resource, and I think it kind of goes after some of those figures you're looking for. It's not perfect. There is no universal definition, but I, I find this data to be pretty, pretty close. So I'll, I'll share that in the message box, but I just wanted to share that. That's a tool that I reference. Thank you.
Right, but you, I mean, I, I did some quick looking here, some quick figuring, and we are talking about more than almost double minimum wage in order to be able to afford the housing that we're talking about. I mean, even the apartments at at eight hundred dollars a month for, for a single person. I mean, if I was single and I have a very responsible job in long-term care, and I don't make fifteen dollars an hour. So, I mean, we talk about these numbers, but I don't think, but it's not grounded in people's realities. I'm sorry, you know, you can pull out the United Way numbers, but they're not grounded in the actual reality in which people are living. And that is my frustration, and that is the frustration that I have heard voiced over and over as we've talked about this project in particular, but many others during the, you know, during the past few months. And it seems like, you know, if, if you're under that fifteen dollars an hour, you, you know, you're just out of luck, like maybe you'll get something later. And so hence, that's my, that's my frustration.
Understood. Thank you. I did share the link.
Thank you. And those are all noted for, all those comments are noted for the record. Are there any additional, I guess, comments from any members of the public before we proceed, or any members of council? All right, we do have one additional hand raised. Moment, it's, it says Kamika Campbell, if you could provide us with your name and location, and it looks like you were unmuted, and you may proceed.
Thank you so much. Kamika Campbell, Shrek Hook. Do I need to spell my name or anything?
No, we have it for the record.
Okay, thank you. I just want to echo Pam's sentiments. We've been having a lot of discussions around affordable housing, as we all know. And I just want to make sure that we are keeping to the forefront of our minds affordability in talking with a lot of our neighbors around town. One of the things that residents are supremely worried about is affordability. And these projects scream on affordability. So I don't know what can be done. I know it costs money to update these properties and to build new construction and all the different things that money is needed for. But there is a real concern that people will be displaced. And honestly, we know the city council cares and that they are doing, you know, you know, trying to push forward these issues in a way that is, you know, meaningful. But we really need to spend more time addressing affordability. New construction is nice. It's beautiful. It will raise so much, you know, value and revenue for the city, but, you know, we, we, we have so many families here and single, single, single people, couples, families that are living you know, at or below the poverty level. And that's a, that's a reality for us. Our Alice score here is, is, is crazy. So I, I just, I just hope we can keep that to the front of our mind as much as possible, and not just to the front of our mind, but what's the plan? What's the plan for people not getting displaced, be, you know, beyond this kind of like, well, we're going to try really hard to do a couple of affordable units. That's just not good enough for residents. And then my comment that will probably will be every week is, we also want to make sure these meetings are accessible to everyone. I make it my business to be here, but I know that some folks will have different challenges trying to access these meetings and give comments. I really wish that we would open back up the email where we would read folks' comments who cannot possibly, you know, make it to these meetings, or at least, you know, acknowledge that folks are submitting comments, and they will be, you know, recorded for the record as well. So those are my comments that I have, want to echo Pam's sentiments, and want to also make sure that we keep these meetings as accessible as possible, so we can hear from residents on these very important issues.
Thank you. I, I know for, before we proceed on that, Ms. Baldock, with our public hearings, I know when we've done previous ones regarding street vacations, we have accepted and receive, do receive comments in writing if individuals want to provide that, that is correct for public hearings.
City Council has accepted them in writing in the past. I didn't real, I didn't realize that that practice had stopped. And I, I think that that is a decision by City Council.
Okay, yeah, yeah, to my knowledge, it, to my knowledge, the receipt of that hasn't stopped. I know, I'm, I'm particularly talking about our public hearing. As I know, we had one for a property up in, on Seventh Street and, and near Radnor and Jefferson. And a lot of the, a lot of the comments that we received and acted upon were via writing. So I know for, for that, I just wanted to, to note that that's the same, and President Williams indicated that the process of receiving comments and writing for our work sessions hasn't has not stopped either. And to, to, excuse me, to the, to the point made by our, by the attendee, Ms. Campbell. I know, you know, not going to speak for anybody, but I know that this is, the issue of affordability is one that we're working to continue to address and want to do so in, in a, in a real way. There is, I think there are things that, you know, we can do, but, you know, and we're hoping to be able to address those with the individuals that are considering to, you know, put, yeah, to, to invest in our community. I think that there are a lot of steps that are going to be taken through the Building and Housing Committee to address those. And, you know, that, that work is something that, you know, all of us want to continue to see move forward. But with that, if there are no additional comments, I will close the public hearing on Bill Three of twenty-twenty-one. If individuals have any additional comments prior to our work session, I'm, excuse me, prior to our legislative session next week, they can feel free to provide them to the city clerk's office in writing or reach out to, you know, myself via email, and my email address is wmajors@harrisburgpa.gov. And I would also ask that any additional comments come in that way, and then, if they are, and, but for the, the purpose of this meeting, our hearing is now adjourned.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Majors. We will now continue the public hearing with Bill Seventeen, Building and Housing Committee. Ms. Bowers, who is the committee chair?
For the Building and Housing Committee.
Can you speak up, Ms. Bowers?
Can you hear me? Hello? I don't know what's on audio. Okay. This evening, before the Building and Housing Committee, we have Bill Seventeen of twenty-twenty. Mr. Petroski, could you please read it into the record?
Yes, Bill Seventeen of twenty-twenty is an ordinance amending Part Three of Title Seven, the zoning code of the city of Harrisburg to provide certain zoning relief for developments which contain affordable housing dwelling units in the city of Harrisburg to encourage the development of affordable housing throughout the city of Harrisburg.
Thank you. Ms. Baldock or Mr. Knight, who will be speaking on behalf of this bill for the administration?
Tiffany, do you want to maybe introduce it, and I can maybe get through some of the specifics about?
And I'll go ahead. Let's do this. Let's go ahead and move what I've marked as city exhibit. I'll do this exhibit two, just to keep it separate from Bill Three, which is a true and correct copy of Bill Seventeen of twenty-twenty. And this bill is to, it's a larger part of the Affordable Housing legislation, legislative packet, and this And this provides zoning incentives, some zoning relief to developers who qualify, who are, meet the minimum quite criteria for building some affordable housing units. If you want to talk more about the, the details and what exactly the zoning relief is for developers?
Sure. So there are a couple of components of the, of the legislation, the zoning code amendments. The first, I guess, going through the document, the zoning code document in order is within Chapter Seven dash three oh five of the zoning code. And specifically in the table in seven dash three oh five point seven, you can see that there are some changes to the charts, which hopefully kind of creates more opportunities for housing. So obviously, you know, one of the aspects of, of housing affordability is the cost and the time and the energy that it takes, you know, to go through a process and really the uncertainty in going through a process. So within this chart, you see in the residential principal uses that attached dwellings would be permitted in the, or permitted by special exception, not permitted by right in the residential low-density district. And that attached dwellings, multifamily dwellings and semi-detached dwellings would be permitted by right in the CG district. We don't have too many of either zoning designations, frankly, in the city. The RL is largely limited to Academy Manor and Bellevue Park. And the CG district is, tends to be limited to some of our auto-oriented corridors. But the intention behind that is to, for example, in the CG district, to allow multifamily dwelling by right there so that, you know, a lot of times these are larger parcels here in the city. And so they would be more appropriate for some multifamily development. You are usually on a major, a major thoroughfare, so access usually is not an issue. But as opposed to having to go through the zoning relief process and in addition to the land development plan process and the cost and uncertainty of that, by making it a by right aspect in that district, you encourage and hopefully incentivize people to begin looking at, for example, a multifamily dwelling instead of a car dealership or instead of a convenience store or something of that nature. So that's kind of what that, the purpose of that change is. In addition to Section C of the chart, we have the accessory dwelling unit aspect. So right now it's permitted by special exception in the RL, RM and the Riverfront districts. And then the accessory dwelling unit would be permitted by right in those districts. And that's again, meant to kind of help at the, at the edges. So accessory dwelling units are accessory to a primary unit. On the site, they are a small, they are limited in size and kind of location to where they can go. So it's not just kind of opening up multifamily dwelling, really. It's kind of more geared towards if you're looking to do a multifamily household or a multi-genre, I'm sorry, I should say multi-generational family household, you would be able to do that instead of having to create a separate unit, you could, you know, create in-law suite, for example, whether that's over your garage or perhaps, you know, in an attic or something or in a walkout basin, basement. So that's designed to kind of, again, work around the edges at affordability. In addition to that, the next step is kind of the affordable, the development standards in Section Seven dash three oh seven. And this is kind of really the meat of the incentive portion of the legislation. And you can kind of see the chart there. It's on page, I think, seven of the, of the legislation packet where you have two different affordability categories, both low income and that's under eighty percent of the median family income. And then you have workforce, which is the eighty to twenty percent of the median family income. And then you have a percentage of units being affordable for a project in that, in that district. And then you see the density bonuses besides that, the minimum lot area bonuses, maximum purview slot coverage and principal building height. And really, what the intent of this was is, is to incentivize new develop, or incentivize more units, because if you have more units on the same square footage, for example, or in the same building, those units will necessarily be, should be cheaper. And so this will help hopefully incentivize cheaper units for residents. And we tried to focus, look at this from a perspective of not increasing negative impacts through this, through this incentive. So we didn't want to incentivize developers to pave over or build on an entire lot, for example, because that can have adverse impacts as far as urban heat island effect runoff, which as council knows, we're kind of under a partial consent decree with the EPA to limit combined sewer overflows that occur from runoff. So we really looked at trying to say, how can we encourage more density within an existing building envelope or on an existing parcel? And then how can we allow higher buildings too? So we can allow an extra floor of development, which won't again have more of the impervious surface put on a property. We also addressed some aspects of the specific criteria. And again, these aspects were largely related to the chart in Chapter Seven, three oh five point seven to kind of make sure our language is consistent throughout the zoning code. And then finally, we got to the off-street parking and loading aspect of the legislation. And really, that was, the other stuff were all kind of based on the institutional knowledge that largely I have had in my eight years here and kind of the types of projects we see, what we hear from developers, what we hear from the community. And this last section is really more ba, based on data. We had the Planning Bureau looked up statistics from the U.S. Department of Transportation, from the U.S. Census Bureau on things like access to a vehicle, how many vehicles per household. And really, all of the numbers are saying that at lower how, income levels, which is logical, lower income levels, you will see lower rates of car ownership. So if we're encouraging more affordable units and units that can accommodate more households of lower income, we won't need as much parking for those types of uses. So by giving a little bit of relief from the off-street parking requirements as we allow denser development or more units on a site, we want to make sure that that's, you know, not compelling a developer to pave more of the area or perhaps even build like a structured parking solution, depending on how much space is available on a lot. So all of these things are meant to work together and be supportive of one another here. They're not kind of viewed individually as much as they are viewed as saying, what does affordable housing mean when it gets built out there in the real world? And how do we incentivize that without having, you know, these adverse impacts of too much development on a site or encouraging a lot of vehicular trips to occur?
Thank you, Mr. Knight and Ms. Baldock for those overviews. Just wanted to remind everyone, as Ms. Baldock stated, Bill Seventeen of twenty twenty is a part of a larger affordable housing legislative package that was introduced last year. There are four bills within the package. Just for a reminder, Bill Sixteen of twenty twenty establishes the Affordable Housing Program. And we have Bill Seventeen, twenty twenty, which is our zoning amendment and density bonus. Bill Eighteen is a street vacation. Bill Nineteen is a LERTA amendment. At this time, I will open the floor to questions from my colleagues. We will begin with Councilwoman Daniels. Do you have any question?
No, I think the explanation was thorough.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Mattson, any questions on Bill Seventeen?
No, I, I did see that we got a comment from, I don't know if they're, I won't say their name from a resident, but I know that they happen to also sit on the zoning court. So I didn't know if there was time for the chair or administration to review those comments and, and address them.
Thank you. I believe the resident is present this evening. So once we get to attendee participation, I'm hopeful that they will chime in the conversation.
Very good. Thank you. I, yeah, just eager to, they had some good points there, so eager to hear, yep, what they have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Majors, any questions on Bill Seventeen?
Excuse me. Yes. So the, the first question I have is regarding the the residential low density. Are, are we seeing a, an increase in folks considering some of those type of accessory units as to why we are looking to incorporate this into the legislation by right versus allowing the, the, the normal process to, to proceed? I know, so I know we, we, there were some folks that were potentially interested in, in doing a, some multifamily units in some of those areas that I had seen previously. And I know they had one before either the zoning board or their, the planning board and had some. And I don't believe that it was approved, but are we seeing, are we seeing that as a, a method people are considering? Or is this looking to, to address something that hasn't really been a concern yet?
I think it's more looking to the future. As you note, you know, we had a, a recent request for a multifamily dwelling in the RL district. But for the most part, we don't really see a lot of that happening in the residential low-density district. However, the houses do tend to be larger there. They tend to be detached homes. And, you know, sometimes we'll have garages and, you know, having a, an, an affordable, or sorry, accessory, accessory dwelling unit permitted by right allows somebody to, again, create like an in-law suite or even if they say, you know what, we want to try and generate a little bit more income in the property we own to help us with our mortgage, for example. And they want to put a, a room up there, a studio, like a little studio or something where an individual could, could live out of there. You know, that's kind of trying to look at that. It's also kind of taken from other municipalities, not just in Harris, not just in Pennsylvania, but in other places where they're having similar discussions to what we're having now. And it's about, you know, how to, how to attack affordability from all aspects. It's not just, you know, allowing a developer to build more, but it's looking at our current property owners and saying like, do they have options for making their housing more affordable? Maybe one, maybe especially after COVID, maybe they've lost a job and they need to bring in additional rent. And renting out the space over their garage would be one way they can do that. And so it's kind of looking at where the nation is moving in terms of housing affordability. Because again, this conversation is happening all over the country, not just here in Harrisburg. And so we're kind of looking to fold in some of what we're seeing across the country into our recommendations here on this as well.
Excuse me. Okay. And thank you for that, that explanation. I think one of the other issues that isn't necessarily addressed in, in this, but I think is a, an issue that we all have either heard from residents about or, you know, look to deal with is, you know, some of the multifamily dwelling units that are currently exist that may not be, well, let me just put this, let me just be frank. With rooming houses and, and folks that are renting out portions of their, their homes, but may not always be up to code or, or illegal, you know, it's, it's, it's an issue that, you know, a lot of people are dealing with when we're looking at, at affordability, right? You know, we're, we're, we're seeing this especially in, in these COVID times where, while, while there are current moratoriums in place at the federal level and, and state and the city level. You know, affordability for, for folks is, is a big issue. So is there a way that we could, you know, look to make some amendments to address some of those concerns? Because I, it, it's a, an issue that I know we all are, are privy to that is, is happening in the city. And we want to ensure folks are, are living in, in places that are not only affordable, but, you know, are, are, are up to code and up to par.
Yeah, and I think, you know, ultimately, that's a little bit of a separate issue. That's a building codes issue. Whether things are, the plumbing's inspected and approved, the electrical's inspected and approved, you know. You have firewall separation between units, you know, those are all building code aspects. But with regards to accessory dwelling units, you know, it's still a dwelling unit which requires a, you know, living, sleeping area, a kitchen, kitchenette and like a ba, and a bathroom. And so a lot of times when we see things like the rooming houses that you had mentioned, like those places do not have bathrooms. Those don't, they don't have individual bathrooms for each area. They don't have an individual kitchen, kitchenette. So those would not, a rooming house would not fall under an accessory dwelling unit. An accessory dwelling unit would not move a rooming house any closer to permissivity within any sort of zoning district.
Thank you. And then we wouldn't, we wouldn't run into that or experience that issue with any of the, with the, the CN district as well, correct?
The CG district, you mean?
CG district, excuse me, sorry.
Yeah, I, I don't think so. As noted, we don't really have a lot of the CG districts throughout the city. I'm kind of looking at the city zoning map right now. And I mean, you're looking more at, you know, commercial corridors. You got the Uptown Shopping Plaza, a couple of places over near Hack, the Klein Plaza, South Twenty-Ninth Street, and then a little bit up Seventh Street and on Paxton. And that's like pretty much it. And, you know, I, to my knowledge, we haven't ever had a development proposal for those. But I don't know also if that's a function of our current zoning regulations that don't allow that by right. Maybe one of those locations, maybe the Uptown Shopping Center would say, well, now if I'm allowed to do multifamily housing, I'll look at that instead of just leaving my property as a, you know, strip mall with a huge parking lot in the middle. So, you know, that's what that revision supposed, meant to do is meant to at least get those property owners thinking about it and saying, this is now going to be a little bit easier. Maybe that's the push they needed to, to develop some housing.
Okay, thank you. No further questions at this time. Thank you, Chair Bowers.
You're welcome. Thank you. Vice President Allen, any questions?
I don't at this point. Thank you.
You're welcome. President Williams, any questions on Bill Seventeen? You are on mute.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I don't. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. At this time, I would like to entertain questions from the attendees present. Please raise your hand if you have, would like to provide any commentary on Bill Seventeen of twenty twenty. Okay, I see two hands. Okay, three. Let's start with Ed, if you could please unmute and state your name and address for the record. I believe you're permitted to speak.
Ed, if you could click unmute on your device.
Okay, we'll come back. Ms. Campbell?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to say that I wanted to make sure and recognize that what Mr. Knight is saying about the rooming houses is excellent versus having multi, letting families do multi, I guess, purpose dwelling or, you know, multifamily dwellings in their own homes and giving them the ability to do that. I just wanted to know, and I think, I think it's, part of it is a little bit in here under this, I think, the specific criteria piece. But I just wanted to know, is there any, is there, is there any plan for the, how those rooming houses will work or will that kind of fall under the multifamily? Or will that kind of fall under the multifamily dwelling piece as well?
Are you, are you referring to the accessory dwelling units?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, so, um, the accessory dwelling units, uh, are different, uh, from the multifamily dwelling, uh, because largely limited to their size. Uh, so the current, uh, criteria says accessory dwelling unit may not be larger than twenty-five percent of the square footage of the principal residential unit. So this isn't a case where you're taking a townhome and each floor, uh, is going to be a separate apartment, uh, unit, um, and it's just for one additional dwelling unit. So, uh, this is really geared towards a lower density approach to adding units, uh, than what like a multifamily conversion would be. Um, and again, the approach is more geared towards multi-generational homes. Um, maybe a family has, uh, a, a child that graduates college and they want to move back in, but they don't necessarily want to like, you want to have a little independence or something like that. So you create a separate, uh, unit, um, above the garage or whatever. So, uh, it's, it's not really a for, it's not really, um, multifamily housing. It's more, uh, taking a, an existing single-family housing and creating, uh, this small little unit that again could be, uh, for in-law suite, could be for, um, you know, parents, kids coming back in to live with their, with their parents, things of that nature.
Okay, would that have a different, um, so, uh, if somebody would, wanted to like rent out and, do that to rent out an apartment, would that fall under this? Or would it be some, fall under something else?
So if, for example, there was, um, a home and they had a detached garage and they said, you know, the te-, detached garage was, I don't know, uh, four hundred square feet, and they said, we'd like to, you know, put a little shower up there, a little kitchenette, and it'd be, basically be an efficiency, and we'd like to rent that out, uh, to, you, you know, any individual. Uh, it doesn't have to be related family-wise, um, then we would allow that to happen, you know? If somebody was, somebody was saying, I want, I ha-, I own this row house and I want to live on the first floor and rent out the next two floors, they couldn't do that because of the size limitation of the accessory dwelling unit.
God, now I understand. Thank you. And then, um, is there, my last question in looking at this is, um, is there a, I see there's some, um, reference to zo-, zones here? So RM and RF zoning districts right by the CN, CG, et cetera? Um, am I missing where, I, I may have missed where that's lo-, located? So like, if I wanted to look at a map of that and see where that was located?
Uh, so yeah, so we have a, uh, we have a zoning map on, uh, interactive, uh, GIS map on the city's website, uh, under the, uh, Planning Bureau's webpage that you can look at. And, uh, that has, um, all of our zoning districts and also a legend that kind of lets you know which color corresponds to which zoning district. Uh, and it also has, um, you know, other additional information that might be helpful if you're looking at this, such as, uh, historic districts or floodplains. Um, so we do have that, uh, resource available to the public. I can, I believe, um, we've communicated in the past. I believe, uh, I have your email address. I can send you a link to that, um, uh, resource if you'd like.
Oh, that'd be exciting. And I know that, uh, uh, someone has been putting links in the chat here, so.
Oh, yeah, right.
Yeah, that would be awesome if that could just go in chat. And I know, cause I've, I've seen the, you know, the regular zone, the other, some of the zoning maps that I was more interested in these, these, these are, these designations are a little newer to me. So I just wanted to kind of brush up on that. Thank you very much.
No problem. I just, uh, added that to the chat.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Leonard?
Thank you, Ms. Bowers. I'm Tom Leonard. I live at three fifteen Edward Street. I submitted written comments and I gather that some council members have already read those, which I appreciate it. I just wanted to make a few comments and ask some questions. The overall comment I want to make is the Bill seventeen is, is well-intentioned, but my fear is that it will present some negative unintended consequences. The, the, the bill is perhaps not recognizing that, uh, Harrisburg's residential neighborhoods, many of them are densely populated, and that, that density makes street parking in some of those neighborhoods very difficult, if not impossible. And the, the loosening of the parking standards in Bill seventeen will make that situation worse. I want to start off by a point that I made in my written submission somewhat later, but it's this provision with regard to the accessory, uh, dwelling units, uh, by being allowed by right. And it's important to note that this, this would only occur if it's an owner-occupied building, but I, I see nothing in the ordinance, in the proposed ordinance that says that accessory unit use will end when the owner sells the property. Am I wrong there, Mr. Knight?
Uh, no, I believe you're correct here. I don't think there's anything in the, um, in the zoning, uh, uh, code revi-, amendment, uh, that says that it would end when the, uh, property was sold, for example.
Thank you. My, my fear with that is for the property that perhaps is set up to house a relative, uh, that's fine, but you also would have, uh, the opportunity for someone to just rent out the permissible space for an income to help them with their own life, and then they could sell that property. And the next owner would not necessarily be a, a live-in owner. So I would, I would caution council to look at that carefully and see if that's what you really want to do, because the benefits of having an owner occupier of a property are pretty obvious as opposed to an absentee landlord, which council I know over the years has been occupied with complaints from absent, about absentee landlords. The, the, the lib-, the liberalization and the loosening up of the parking standards is really going against a long-term, uh, trend in Harrisburg, which has been in our zoning code to require applicants who are seeking a more density per unit to show the impact on a neighborhood. And that, and that would have to go through the Planning Commission, the Zoning Hearing Board. That would be eliminated, and this would just be, uh, done by right in, in certain of these residential zones. I would caution council to think of the ramifications of that. The, uh, the earlier discussion that Mr. Knight engaged in with the prior applicant for the project between Riley and Harris, or Riley and Boyd, I'm sorry, the, is, uh, the discussion came up about the, uh, I'm sorry, pardon me. Let me back that up a minute. Mr. Knight, when he began this presentation regarding Bill seventeen quoted some national studies and, uh, state studies about how's, uh, automobile usage by persons who are low income. My own observations in Harrisburg, living here almost four decades, are that, uh, many low-income people have cars and they drive and they, uh, compete for street parking places with everyone else. So I would just caution council to look at this carefully and make sure this is what you want to do to promote affordable housing. I think the current, uh, rules do protect neighborhoods. They do protect, uh, other property owners who are, uh, in the same competition for parking places. Again, we live in a densely populated city. The RM district designation spans a huge swath of variety of neighborhoods in the city, every, everywhere from, uh, single-family homes to doubles, duplexes, to, to, to tightly packed row house neighborhoods. So it, it bears scrutiny to make sure that this is what council wants to do to promote, uh, affordable housing. The, one of the nine purposes of the zoning code, whether it's amended or not, this still remains in place. The zoning code, uh, has nine purposes, and one of them is, I quote, "to prevent overcrowding," end quote. There's a certain beauty in density. There's a certain, uh, positivity to density, but I think we have to be careful that this may be a broad brush that's not applied with, uh, uh, a real sensitivity to neighborhoods. Again, thank you for your time for letting me speak, uh, Chairwoman Bowers. And if you have any questions of me, feel free, and I also would urge you to read my, uh, written statement. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Leonard. I, I did read your, your comments and thank you for submitting them prior to our meeting. I'm hopeful that, um, my colleagues had an opportunity to review them as well. And I know that, um, we will all, um, take them into consideration when moving forward with Bill seventeen. So thank you. It looks like Mr. Jarik.
Yeah. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you now.
Yeah, sorry about my computer problems. I didn't have my headset. I was wondering, is there a reason why my chat is disabled? Uh, just in general, I mean, I wanted to submit my comments via chat and say that I could not talk on audio. And I was just curious, is that a standard practice or no big deal? But, you know, we're at a public hearing. It'd be nice to see comments. I know you don't necessarily have to reply to them, but I think the more input you could receive would probably be better for all. It still shows disabled.
I do believe that the chat feature has been disabled, um,
Okay, no, no.
attendees and, and as a general practice, we don't have the chat on, so there's not conversations going on behind the scenes.
Yeah, and I just want to say some of the other comments in general, people are worried about people not have a way to input. You know, I actually wrote in text in a Word document, the few little sentences I wanted to say, but didn't have my headphones. I found them. I got in and I did it, but I'll just read, you know, for the record. I just have a minor little edit for Jeffrey Knight. And first, Jeffrey, I want to say, great work on the bill. I'm a big fan of ADUs. I don't think you should worry about parking requirements. The, you know, city population is what, forty, forty-five thousand? I think we gotta add ten thousand more people into the city moving forward. So the parking, I think, will figure itself out. But I just wanted to say, I just want to offer a possible minor edit on Bill seventeen twenty twenty. I may be reading this wrong or have a prior document, but I'm not sure if line one twenty-three for ADU in SE, in the CN zone text matches the table on line seventy-six. So line twenty-three, one twenty-three versus what's in one twenty-six. I think there's a typo there. And, you know, the one I'm looking at says, uh, it lists permitted in Zone CN, and I hope this helps you. Uh, and I was gonna say, I cannot do audio and just send the success as text, and I hope this helps you. So that's really all I got to say, but, uh, good work and use my edit if it helps you.
Yeah, I think the, uh, so the accessory dwelling unit changes as part of this legislation only change for the, uh, RL, RM and RF district. If I had incorrectly referred to that as CN earlier, my apologies, but.
Well, no, no, I, I know. I, I think it is on line one, one twenty-three. It's underlined. And by special exception in the CN zoning district, it's an amendment. So I just want to make sure that you've got the right text on line one twenty. Do you know what I'm saying? I'm not trying to be a nitpicker here. I'm just trying to make sure you get this straight, because I'm sure down the road, you're gonna have people showing you a chart versus what's in the wording. So good work. Again, I'm not, nothing negative. Good luck to you.
It's a good catch. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much for that, uh, technical amendment to Bill seventeen. Are there any other public comments at this time? Oh, okay. Uh, Ms. Parsons?
Thank you, Ms. Bowers. Um, and thank you, Jeffrey, for explaining this. I think my question was, ha-, has been, has been answered, but I just want to be sure. Um, and it involves tiny houses. Um, would this amendment, would this less, legislation allow for tiny houses? And, cause I've, and I've actually heard some things about, uh, potential proposed tiny house developments um, in and around the city. How does, um, and I've seen some things that have said tiny, tiny houses are affordable, but I also know some that are pretty darn expensive. So does this have any impact on that?
Um, so the issue, like our zoning code, um, I, I guess I would say definitely didn't foresee the, uh, uh, trend of tiny homes. Um, it's my knowledge, we've only had, uh, one, uh, pro-, proposal for that, and that's, uh, down at eleven oh three, uh, South Front Street. That was, uh, heard in November of last year and then into this year, uh, at our Planning Commission and Zoning Hearing Board, um, meetings. And that was for, that's a fifteen-unit, uh, tiny home village with a community center for homeless veterans. Um, I'm not aware of any other formal proposals that have been brought to the, uh, zoning hearing board, but we have had, uh, inquiries about that. And what I've generally told people is, if you're taking a vacant lot and putting a tiny home on it, uh, we would just view that as basically a detached, single-family home. Um, but with respect to its consideration as an accessory dwelling unit, um, I don't see why it wouldn't, um, apply. Uh, if somebody had, say they didn't have a garage in the, in the back of their house and they only had a parking pad, um, or a driveway, and they wanted to put a tiny home on that, so long as it met the, um, regulations of the specific criteria being thirty, less than thirty-three or thirty-three percent or less of the square footage, uh, that the principal residential structure was owner-occupied, um, I don't see why a tiny home would not be considered an ADU.
Oh, okay. Thank you very much. That, that really helps to clarify that. And part of the reason why I asked was exactly what you said in the beginning. I mean, years ago, nobody even thought about this idea. And it's only been, um, become more popular recently. And I think some of the ideas are still in the process of coming forward about how people think about that. So thank you very much for that clarification.
Welcome.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from the public?
Councilwoman Bowers, I'd just like to remind our, um, dial-in attendees that they can press star nine to raise their hand, and then star six to unmute when prompted.
Thank you. Do any of our dial-in participants, okay, I see, uh, Ms. Barbie Dare. I believe you may begin to speak. Ms. Barbie Dare? Ms. Barbie Dare, I believe you are able to speak? I'm not sure what, if there's a technical issue. Um, Moment, are you able to assist?
Uh, I believe she's unmuted, but, uh, she may be having some, uh, audio issues from her side.
I don't want to miss her commentary. Uh, Ms. Barbie Dare, if you can hear me, um, we'll give you a few minutes if you can. Ms. Barbie Dare, if you can hear me, we'll give you a few minutes if you can. Okay, you're. Ms. Barbie Dare, anything? Is there another way that we can accept her commentary? If we are not able to rectify her audio issues?
Councilwoman Bowers, she would be able to submit something in writing.
Okay.
It wouldn't be part of the formal public hearing, but you could still consider her comments.
Okay, Ms. Barbie Dare, if you can hear us, we will follow up with you to submit comments for the record. I apologize for the technical difficulties.
Ms. Bowers, is she able to submit those now?
Okay, Ms. Barbie Dare, not sure if you can hear me. If you are able to submit your comments now, we will accept them. I don't, I'm not sure if she can even hear me.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments from council members? Thank you all for your participation. I just have some concluding comments, I guess. Just wanted to note that I, I think the entire affordable housing legislative package is rather forward-thinking for the City of Harrisburg in reference to the bonus density outlined in Bill seventeen of twenty twenty. It is a useful tool in other municipalities within the Commonwealth, in Lancaster, Pittsburgh, and across the country. Austin, Texas has a great model, Los Angeles, California. The goal with this bill really was for anyone to be able to pick up the legislation and understand what we were trying to do. And it came out of a denial from the zoning hearing board of a, a project. So I did some research and this is what came out of that discussion. So I'm, I'm hopeful that we can find some compromise in getting the bill forward and making sure that it is effective for everyone. So that at this time, this concludes the public hearing of the Building and Housing Committee.
Thank you, Ms. Bowers. At this point, is there any additional comments? Or questions? Again, are there additional comments or questions? And one more time, is there additional questions or comments before we leave the hearing? Okay. No more additional public comments. I would ask for a motion to adjourn the public hearing.
President, I, I believe Ms. Barbie D is on another device. We can give her another, another moment.
Okay. Thank you, Momma.
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Bowers, Ms. Barbie Dares.
No problem. Ms. Barbie Dare, if you can unmute.
There I go. I'm unmuted?
Yes, we, we can hear you.
Don't you love technology?
Really, uh, something.
Just turn that one off so you don't get an echo. Thank you so much for allowing me to speak and for being patient while I logged in on another device. I could hear everything you could, you were saying, but apparently that microphone's not working. Thank you again. My name is Loretta Barbie Dare. I live in Summit Terrace. And I'm asking this on behalf of the Summit Terrace Neighborhood Association about the changes in seventeen. Now, I'll try to make this quick because I know you were getting ready to adjourn. Thank you again. I was concerned about this because Summit Terrace, I believe in nineteen eighty-eight, as part of our formulation of our association, had wanted to make sure that the homes in this neighborhood in our ACD remained single-family homes. We are having quite an issue here right now with people converting properties into rooming houses. And of course, Mr. Leonard, not to, I, I think it was, Mr. Leonard, it was Mr. Jaros that said about the cars and the parking. We have an issue up here with parking that I'm actually speaking to some of the personal property owners of some of these lots to help turn them into parking. So our residents have a place to park. There are many families here that, one family owns three, four. On my street, there's two families that owns five cars in one household. That's ten spaces of parking and there's only a room out here for seven. And a lot of us are seniors. We have the handicapped placards. We have to park two blocks away in order to get home. Meanwhile, while these folks are turning these single-family homes into apartments or, or rooms, basically, and charging exorbitant rents for them, apparently, for the, the ones I've been able to speak to, it really creates a congestion, not only of the space that we have for parking, but also in the community itself. There is always a turnover of people that, this person may be here and then you don't see him again for two months and then you'll see somebody else come in. And the, the cohesiveness that we have here in this neighborhood of knowing who our neighbors are is completely going out the window. And what I would like to find out, Jeffrey, is this amendment is number seventeen. Is that gonna impact what we already have here in Summit Terrace? That these are to stay, single-family homes?
Yeah, so, thank you for the question, Loretta. And I don't know if you caught the full response I had previously to one of the inquiries. But conversions of homes, a lot of what you're dealing with and what we, I think, see throughout the city are not a result of by right work or even work that would become by right as a part of this legislative package. It's more illegal work. It's illegal conversions of properties. This happens very, very often throughout the city. It's, it's challenging when, when properties change hands as fast as they do. And that kind of goes to one of your other discussion points about kind of the residential churn in the neighborhood. When properties change as fast as they do, you know, it can be hard to catch people that are doing these things. And so this wouldn't change the legality of these illegal conversions into multiple units or even into rooming houses. Those would still require the same types of reviews as they do now. They're just not getting them because we're not aware of them. Because, you know, they're occurring under the radar, work's being done, you know, at night, over weekends, whatever. And it's challenging. And I think, you know, our coach administrator, Dave Patton, can probably speak more to the challenge in catching people doing that and running them through the court system. You know, that's, there is a process by which this happens, but it's, it's challenging. And I would say that with the revisions we're proposing, do not make that stuff by right and will not, will not grandfather in those particular, that work at all in any, in any sense of the word. We would still go after that with the same sort of process as we would now. So, you know, I think the accessory dwelling unit aspect you had mentioned does not apply to the conversion of row homes into apartments on each floor. Because the, A, the properties will need to be owner occupied to establish an ADU. And B, because the ADU is limited in terms of the square footage of that unit to the principal unit on the property. You know, many of the, many of the issues we have that you've referenced are due to absentee landlords. But the ADU requires that the property be owner occupied. So it won't be an issue of some landlord from outside the city or outside the state doing this work. I, I can't promise, I can't promise that will stop should this legislation pass, but it will not allow that as a by right action.
I appreciate that so much, Jeffrey. Thank you for just clarifying that for me. And thank you again, counsel, and guests for allowing me to ask that question and to speak.
You're welcome. Thank you. I'm glad that we were able to get your comments on the record for, to include within the hearing. So at this time, we will conclude the public hearing of the Building and Housing Committee.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Bowers. Again, I will ask, is there any additional public comments or questions before we close? Okay, have a motion to adjourn the public hearing?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Public hearing is officially adjourned. Thank you, Ms. Shannon. We now will move forward with our work session. And we'll start with Public Works Committee. I understand Ms. Rafrika is not doing the update on the greenhouse project. She will be at another legislative session, another work session. Okay. Okay, Mr. Major.
That's correct.
Turn it over to you for Public Works Committee.
Okay, thank you, President Williams. Excuse me, as President Williams mentioned, this is the public work session for the Public Works Committee. As was mentioned, Ms. Mohammed, who was supposed to provide the greenhouse project update, will not be here this evening, so we will do that in another session. So there's only one item on our agenda today that will be Bill five of twenty twenty-one, and I will read it into the record. Bill twenty-two, oh, excuse me, Bill five of twenty twenty-one. Orders amending the City of Harrisburg's official traffic control map pursuant to Chapter three dash one oh nine of the codified ordinance along North Sixth Street and North Seventh Street in the zones between Hur Street and Riley Street. And we have the city engineer, Mr. Wayne Martin, on here. If you can provide us with a brief explanation of Bill five, that'd be appreciated.
Thank, thank you, Chairman Majors. And I'm also joined by our parking, the City's Parking Administrator, Rich Cots, and Nancy Kime from SP Parkings. But briefly, this is a project, two projects, actually. One would be the State Street, so I'm sorry, Sixth Street Road Diet, which was a four-to-three, four-lane to three-lane conversion that added bike lanes and approximately thirty-eight spaces on Sixth Street between Hur and Riley. That project is completed and those spaces are available and currently utilized at no, at no cost. Seventh Street Project, the ninety-plus spaces in front, in front of FIA were underutilized by, by FIA and are being eliminated as part of the Seventh Street Multimodal Project, which will add pedestrian refuge areas, green infrastructure, and what have you to the Seventh Street Project. Those spaces, they're actually currently removed because it's actually part of the temporary traffic control plan. That project's currently under construction and is scheduled for completion late twenty twenty-one. So basically, it takes ninety-plus spaces away from parking on Seventh and adds approximately thirty-eight spaces along Sixth Street between Riley and Hur.
Okay, thank you. And as you mentioned, those spaces are currently there, but there will now be metered and under the control of Standard Parking. That's correct.
That is correct. Yep.
Okay, thank you. So I will, I don't know, is anyone from Standard Parking, do you have any comments, Miss Kime? Or is there anyone that wants to make any comments from Standard Parking on this amendment before we proceed?
Hi there. Can you hear me? This is Nancy.
Yes, we can.
Okay, perfect. We're looking, those spaces are not going to be metered. We are going to do the touchless payment with, right now, which is Park Mobile, which also has to be changed. Wayne is exactly correct. There are thirty-eight spaces, but they are going to be count, contactless payment, which is the new way everybody's going. So that you do not have to touch a meter or anything like that. So there would be plenty of signs up, beginning and ending block signs and a block, a sign in the middle of the block that would allow people to pay by phone, by your iPad, many, many ways. It's the new wave of parking.
Okay, so this would, so this would be, this would differentiate from the current zones where we, we have some of those, the, the meters where you go to the meter, you put your license plate in. This is gonna be, just for these parking spaces, only, the only way you'll be able to, to pay the rate would be via touchless. Is that correct? Or could you go to another, one of the other meters in another area and make the?
You, you would, you would not, this will be its own zone. We're making, creating a new zone there and that you would not be able to go pay at another meter. And this is a trial period. Many, many, many cities are, are doing this one. For example, Scranton, PA, they've had great success. And of course, we will be fair. If people don't understand how to do it or you can, you can pay for your parking on a flip phone. You don't have to have an iPhone. You don't have anything. You can just call one eight, 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 six, six number as we already have in the City of Harrisburg.
Okay, thank you. I would just wanted to make sure that, you know, there were different ways for folks to be able to access those spaces because, you know, we just want to make sure people know how to do that. And all that signage will be provided, should this go through. So I will, if there aren't any, is there anyone else from, that wants to speak on that before I open it up to questions from members of council? All right. Seeing none, I will start with questions from on the dais to, I guess, it'll be my right with Councilwoman Daniels. Do you have any questions for, on, on the resolution?
So we're adding thirty-eight parking spots?
Yes, so Wayne, so we are adding the thirty-eight spaces. I know most of them, I believe, are currently there. They are between, they're on Sixth Street between Hur and Riley Street. They are the parallel spaces. I believe currently there are, they are not metered, but they will, they, they will be, they'll be added into the standard parking cache of parking spaces within, in the city. And we are going to be taking away, I believe, Wayne, if I had the numbers correct, ninety spaces that were under SP currently on Seventh Street. That, those are the spaces that are between Hur and, I guess, almost, and Riley. And those are the spaces that are gonna be converted as we're looking to make that change to the road diet there. So that the spaces in front of the East Gate, Penn State East Gate Center and near where the old M and T Bank, which is gonna soon house some of our, our traffic and engineering folks.
So I guess this is maybe for Ms. Valda. With our contract with Standard Parking, could you remind me, is our agreement that they have so many numbered spaces? Or is our agreement that they have kind of control and oversight over the area within the map? And it's been years since I've looked at that map. But could you just refresh my memory as to? Are there any special additional processes we have to go? Or is this just part and parcel of the contract we had with the court order?
Councilwoman Daniels, yeah, thank you, Neil. I was gonna say, I don't have it in front of me.
So, so what our contract is, if the city removes spaces, it will replace parking spaces. And the formula in the original agreement was basically based on revenue generated, you know, by the spaces being removed at a formula basis. The, but essentially what we're doing here is replacing one zone that was metered with another zone to be metered, except that meter is now. with another zone to be metered, except that meter is now becoming, you know, a technology term that's not part of parking anymore. The, you know, meters are moving away from the way that parking systems are operating in municipalities. But the agreement is essentially to replace the revenue that would come out of them with additional revenue or other revenue to substitute for spaces removed. So this has been discussed with Standard, I try mine over a long period of time. I think Rich could probably speak to that better than I can. But this was the proposal in order to, to, to make these, this project work.
So are we expanding the zone that, like the physical geographical zone that they?
So literally, it's Riley to, is it, is it her?
Yes.
Same one to the other. It's the same exact number of blocks, but instead of Seventh Street to Sixth Street.
Okay, and that was within the zone before, right? Or not?
I believe so, but I didn't look at the map, frankly.
Okay, I'll look at the map. I need to, yeah, okay. That was really for me.
This is the first real one we've had since the parking agreement started, where we're really replacing one section with another.
Right, right. That's it for me.
Thank you. Counsel, excuse me, Councilman Allen, do you have any questions?
I don't actually, Councilmember Daniels zeroed in on what I was wondering about too, so she covered where I was going to go. Thank you.
Thank you. President Williams, any questions on the resolution?
Yes. Nancy, will this be on Monday to Friday parking, and you're going to include Saturday and Sunday? Could you just give me a, a time period?
It will be just like the rest of the city, Monday through, Monday through Saturday, eight AM to seven PM.
Okay. When will this begin?
Soon as it is approved, we have already prepared the signs. We want to, of course, call one call to make sure that we can drill and put the signs in safely.
Okay.
So we would move forward as fast as possible. As you know, we are getting complaints from the people that live in these areas because of, even with the state not being there much, their parking in all these spaces.
Oh, of course, I've been doing this for the last seven months. I've been.
Right.
Harrisburg was going to allow you guys to put standard parking, to put meters up there, because we had thirty-eight spaces that were occupied by the state workers, and we were not receiving any revenue. And although we don't receive any revenue on the onset, at the end we do. So I was concerned about this months ago. I'm glad that it's, it's coming to fruition. Now, my question is, the ninety spaces on Seventh Street, how would they operate? Were they underutilized or were they being utilized?
They were not being utilized a lot right now because of FIA not being in the office. But when FIA was in the office, and that, for example, we, we had a good revenue flow when the single space meters were there.
Okay. The reason I question that is because I know FIA added two additional parking spaces providing, you know, services for their employees. So that's why I was concerned whether they were being utilized or not. I'm just happy to see this is, is coming to the point where we now are, you can generate revenue, and then we can receive some of that revenue, not much, but just any amount of revenue that we can get from you.
President Williams, I'm on the same page as you. I would really like to see this go through.
Yes, because they're consistently parking and fighting, trying to get those parking spaces every day.
That is correct.
Thank you, Nancy.
Thank you, President Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Major.
Thank you. Thank you, President Williams. Councilman Mattson, any questions?
No question. No questions for me, thanks. I accidentally pinned myself, so then my face just shot up on the screen. It was weird. Sorry.
It's okay. It's okay. Technology sometimes. Councilwoman Bowers, you have any questions?
No, thank you.
Okay, so hearing none, no further questions. I will move that Resolution Five, twenty twenty-one be added to the work session for our, oh, excuse me, not, Bill Five, not Resolution Five, that was my, my mistake. That Bill Five of twenty twenty-one be added to the agenda for our next legislative session. And seeing no further business, that will conclude the Public Works Committee for this evening. And I will turn it back to you, President Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Majors. Before we go any further, Ms. Bowers, are you requesting that Bill Seventeen be put on the agenda for the legislative session? For two, okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. Now moving on to Budget and Finance Committee, Mr. Allen, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. Up for discussion is Resolution Twenty-Five of twenty twenty-one, which is a resolution approving the second proposed twenty twenty-one budget reallocation. Who from the administration will be speaking to this tonight?
I will. Mark Woolley.
All right, thanks, Mark. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Chair Allen. Before you is a second proposed budget reallocation for twenty twenty-one, acknowledging certain changes to the budget and recognizing revenue for the, for the company expenses associated with the revenue. So we have, and also Brian McCutcheon will be discussing some recalc, reclassifications and new budget units for Steelton, Pembroke, and Paxton. First on the agenda would be our, from estimated cash carryover, approximately six hundred thirty thousand, approximately six hundred thirty thousand, two hundred eighty-one dollars. That's for inclusion of a new parks and rec labor position three. Also for the acquisition of the M&amp;T bank building that was just mentioned, and certain repairs to Martin Luther King Elevator Access Control. In addition, we also are reallocating some money from CDG B funds for our biobot monitoring of sewage for COVID nineteen, so we can keep abreast of the pandemic and the levels of infection in our surrounding area. Also acknowledging that we have, and Lily will be on to talk about this, return of certain funds to HUD in the amount of eleven thousand, six hundred and six dollars. There's also a roof replacement. We're having an issue with the public safety building roof, and it's going to be reimbursed by insurance from our neighbor. But we wanted to prepay this in order to ensure that we did not lose our warranty on the roof. So we'll be reimbursed by insurance later. And why don't we go to Brian, and you can get, talk about the reclassification for Steelton, Pembroke, and Paxton.
Okay, thank you, Mark. Good evening, everyone, President Williams, Chair Allen, council members. To summarize, the reallocation plan documents, what Mark is referring to with the Neighborhood Services Fund, what we, what we've done to create more of a, more visibility, we've created a new bucket unit, carved it out from the Neighborhood Services Fund for the three recent municipalities, the three boroughs, namely Steelton, Pembroke, and Paxton, to show clearly both budgeted revenue and expenditures related to each borough. So in, in the reallocation plan, appendices B through D, or I'm sorry, B through E, B is the revenue, C, D, and E are the expenditure sides for Steelton, Pembroke, and Paxton, respectively. That's what this is doing mainly. It's a, it's a classification of a work, specifically the revenue for each one that we've identified, and also the related expenditures. Back when the budget was prepared late last year, these items were, of course, fought out and addressed the best we could, but they were incorporated into the Neighborhood Services Fund budget overall. So now what we're doing to promote this enhanced look for everyone is to create the new budget unit. And the budget unit is mainly, it is the intergovernmental municipalities budget unit. So it's, it's an overall arching housing of all three, three boroughs. And of course, would be available if we would have similar, similar occurrences in the future. So again, it's, it's mainly taking the revenue and expenditures that are already in the Neighborhood Services Fund budget for this particular fiscal year, twenty twenty-one, and, and outbreaking them to, to show you, to show everyone visibility on each borough. That's just an overall summary, but if anybody has any more detailed questions, I can, I can offer up the best I can on those.
So, but my only question that may be more of a thought to you, so going forward, this will provide a much more accurate depiction of both the incurred cost from the services provided as well as the revenue coming in. Is that fair and accurate?
Yeah, that, that's correct, Ben, to, to do just that. Put a lot of thought into trying to, trying to craft, you know, a budget, our, our first pass at it. And it also includes what we worked out to be personnel costs, specifically for those Public Works members that are, that are actually doing the, the work in, in the, the refuse collection work for each borough. We also take into account maintenance on the vehicles that are, that are doing the work in public works through the Vehicle Maintenance Center, fuel needs, repairs and maintenance estimates. Also, we've, we've thought out, we, we know some of the upfront costs, which are significant, that are happening right now for, for Pembroke and Paxton, Paxton, namely the, 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 the totter costs to get people, to get residents equipped with what they need for, for the trash collection. We've all been through that for the most part with Steelton, so there's not as much of an upfront expenditure on that side for Steelton. So it's, it, it's, it's similar to how the Neighborhood Services Fund appears on, on the budget side, namely, as per the ordinance, you know, we, we have, we have personnel services, supplies, and then other costs which, which incorporate our capital expenditures. And that would include outlays that we have for the sanitation vehicles that are specific to each collection in, in each borough.
Brian, stay tuned. I'm just going to go through a few more questions I have before I open up to my colleagues. I think, Mark, you mentioned, was it Lily who's on? I was curious about return of funds for HUD. Can someone give an explanation as to what happened there, just so we can understand the, understand that a little bit more thoroughly?
Sure. Lily's on, and I think this references twenty seventeen.
Yes. Good evening, everyone. Again, as Mark just stated, this is for program year twenty seventeen. The program manager and the director of DBHD at the time, upon investigation, it was determined that the documentation that received from a subrecipient for invoices totaling eleven thousand, six hundred and six dollars and forty-nine cents did not match up with the invoices indicated that we, that they were billing for. Once the city did an investigation, the city has deemed these expenses to be ineligible and had to, and has to repay HUD back in the amount of the eleven thousand, six hundred dollars and forty-nine cents. We did meet with the subrecipient, DBHD did meet with the subrecipient, and it was determined that they did not maintain sufficient, sufficient funds at that time, and that the expenses that they submitted in did not match up, and they did not, and they do not have the funds for repayment. Therefore, we would have to repay the funds back to HUD.
So I know this is something that dated back in twenty seventeen, but I know that throughout kind of history of this program, we've seen that more than once. Lee, do you think we have the controls in place now to make sure that those things don't happen in the same, same way going forward?
Oh, absolutely. We make sure that we check all invoices before, against the contract agreement before submitting the invoices in. We make sure we have several people look at the invoices before processing them. So we definitely make sure that this never happens again.
Thank you. Mark, my last question to you is just more something I think to come. Will we be getting an update on quarterly unused personnel funds and the amount that was left over that not spent in Q one? Will that be forthcoming in the next few weeks, down to quarters complete?
Yes, we're, we're, we're putting that together, and we'll be able to present that to council shortly.
All right, great. I'm going to open up to questions from my colleagues. I'm going to start to the end of the dais and start with Councilmember Bowers.
Don't have any questions. You asked my main question about the return of funds to HUD, so thank you.
Councilmember Mattson?
No question for me, thank you.
Council President Williams?
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Hi, Mark, how you doing?
President Williams, how are you?
I'm good, I'm good. Little concerned, Parks and Recreation Facilities salaries and wages. I'm looking at the two thousand twenty-one budget. I don't see that position in there. So this is a new position that's supposed to take care of the maintenance, I mean, the janitorial services at M&amp;T, right?
So we have Dave Baker's on the line.
Okay, hi, Dave.
President Williams?
Is this a new position or is this, because this is coming out of the general estimated cash carryover in general revenue? So my question to you, is this a new position or is this a position that we're taking from here, from the main building, and transferring over to M&amp;T?
No, we, we will not be transferring this position over to M&amp;T. This, this position, unless I'm misunderstanding here, is for the Parks Maintenance Department, for the Labor Three?
Yes.
Yeah, so this, this is a position that was, it was left out of the budget in twenty twenty-one. We.
It was left out of the budget? I'm sorry, I can't hear you, Dave.
I'm sorry. Yeah, so it, it, it was supposed to be entered into the budget into twenty twenty-one, and it never actually got entered in at the very end of the year, but it was something that, that we, we were all planning on having in the budget. We're going to add an additional Parks Maintenance Laborer to the crew.
So again, this is a new position, right?
Correct.
Yes.
Okay. So now I'm, I'm, I'm down to building improvements, and it's coming out of the grant proceeds. How much was the grant proceeds? One hundred eighty-four thousand, five hundred? And that was for, is that for parks? Is it the mansion out there in the park, in the reservoir park, or what is building improvements for that? Where are we doing that at?
This is the one hundred and five. This is for the.
Roof repair.
The roof for the public safety building.
Okay. Okay, it's under D, but you have it under C. Okay, maybe I'm.
Are we talking about the one hundred and five, seven fifty?
No, I was talking about the one hundred and fifty thousand that you have for, it's four six two zero zero eight, building improvements. It's a hundred and fifty thousand.
Oh, that's the grant for the HVAC, for the public safety building.
Okay.
Dave, Dave, do you want to talk about that?
I'm, I'm aware of that. I, I, my conversation with you before, Mark, I'm, I'm very much aware. I forgot that we were doing the improvements to the HVAC system there, which is badly needed. Okay, so move me on to the next one, building improvements. It's seven thousand dollars. Where is that at?
This is for the Martin Luther King Elevator Access Control.
Okay.
So the, the details around this is, it would fully allow us to still keep the building open to the public.
Right.
Further secure it, so we would now have access control cards handed out to the public if they have a request to go to a different floor. Our three-on-one staff would give them the temporary badge. They would be able to badge onto the elevators up into the stairwells. Up into the stairwells, that that uh, kind of keep uh, individuals where we want them and only where we want them.
Right, you told me about that. Uh, I think you told me about that a couple of months ago. When would that start then, Dave?
Uh, we will work with our existing security contractor. Uh, they're normally about three months out as far as work goes. So once we get the funding, we can get the
Okay, great, great. Good, I'm glad to hear that's gonna happen. I did speak to you about that, like I said, about two or three months ago. Okay, that's all I have. Um, Dave and Mark, I just needed to do uh, confirmation of of those different uh, expenditures.
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Allen.
Thank you. All right, Councilmember Majors.
Thank you. Uh, most of the questions I I have were already answered. Uh, but I'll just speak to the Neighborhood Services uh, under the the other rentals for Paxton and Pembroke. Could just get a brief explanation of what additional has been needed to uh, provide the uh, services to those two neighborhoods. Those two municipalities, excuse me.
So uh, with other rentals, so we've had, uh, we are have been waiting for the delivery of uh, twenty-five yard Packer. Um, and we're in the queue, uh, but uh, because municipalities are buying these, we don't anticipate. We had, we did not um, receive our Packer until uh, I believe mid-February. We were anticipating it in January. And so we had to rent a a Packer um, in order to fulfill our contract. So it it is, we we have it now, um, and going forward, um, we don't, we will not be need to lease that. Rented.
Okay, um, thank you. Thanks for that clarification there. And the only the only the other question I had was already asked by uh, Vice President Allen regarding uh, getting the information on the from the unused personnel expenses uh, from grocery allocations, because it's supposed to come down uh, per our pledge. With each reallocation, so look forward to receiving that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Daniels.
I don't have any questions. Thank you.
All right, uh, concludes some discussion around Resolution twenty-five. We'll go ahead and move this to um, the agenda for our next legislative session for a vote. Up next, we have Resolution twenty-six of twenty twenty-one, which is a resolution ratifying the submission of a redevelopment assistance capital program. Grant application of up to eight million dollars to fund renovations of the Martin Luther King Junior Governmental Center located in North Second Street, Harrisburg. Yay, one, seven, one, oh, one. Uh, Mark, are we sticking with you on this or is someone else gonna leave the discussion?
I can handle this. This is, um, we we had uh, applied for ARCAP funding. Um, uh, last year, uh, we were unsuccessful in our application. Uh, the grant cycle opened again, uh, and we are resubmitting our application, actually word for word. Um, except for the dates, uh, to see if we can um, avail ourselves of some of uh, state funding in order to make improvements to uh, the Martin Luther King Government Center.
I don't know of this, to be true with ARCAP, but I haven't gone to grant apps. Do we ever get feedback on why things were rejected in the past uh, for this? Or is this, I know this seems pretty subjective.
And with this one, we 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 did not. I, um, but we are, we are, we're actively trying to make sure that people know that we're very interested in um, receiving this funding.
Yeah, I don't have any questions. We've been through this before, so I hardly accept any grant application that would bring revenue into renovate City Hall. So um, I will turn this over to uh, questions from my colleagues. I'll start this time with Councilmember Daniels.
Uh, no questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Majors.
No questions, since it's it's already been submitted and we're, we're gonna ratify. But I I hope that we're utilizing some of our, um, some of the folks that are uh, that were, that are on on the city payroll uh, to help us work through this. And well, I guess I do have one question. Do we have any, have we received any buy-in or support for this from our uh, our state representatives, our state senator and our um, our our state representative?
I I, but I can defer to the mayor a little bit on that, but I know that we are currently using our um, our lobbyists to help us uh, put this in the in the forefront of our legislatures. And um, uh, hoping that we're gonna be successful, but as you know, that this is a um, very competitive um, grant phase, and and we're we're just hopeful that they see the 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 value in it.
I'll just add, we did not have support from our senator or our representative for our application last time. I think probably because uh, there were an awful lot of uh, ARCAP uh, applications from Harrisburg that were good projects. Uh, so far more applications than there was uh, uh, funding for it. I I don't know which projects they ultimately chose to support, but I I believe uh, they looked at uh, applications for like the bridge and others and and advocated for those.
Okay, um, so but I think it'll be, well, I'll I'll leave my comment uh, for a later date. But I'll try to work with as many people as we can to try and get this um, thing here, so thanks. No further.
Thank you. Council President.
Well, I would hope that we're gonna use it, our lobbyists that we are paying for, have strategies to uh, try to regain this funding. Since we did not, uh, we weren't awarded last year, Mark, so have we utilized the services of our lobbyists?
We are using them.
Okay, okay. Why, I hope we're successful, because I've been pushing for you to do renovations in this building. It's long awaited and needed here. So I hope we are successful in that, and I hope that our our lobbyists are successful as well. So thank you for moving forward with this.
Thank you, President.
Councilmember Madison.
Uh, no questions for me, thank you.
All right, Councilmember Bowers.
I don't have any questions. Thank you.
All right, hearing no further questions, I will recommend us moving this to the agenda for next week's legislative session for a vote. And that concludes Budget and Finance meeting for tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. We now will move forward with Parks and Recreation and the Richmond Committee. Uh, Ms. Daniels.
Yes, um, uh, who is speaking for the um, for the administration?
Rebecca Ballmer and David Baker.
Is it good, uh, so that either one of you begin um, introducing the purpose of the grant application? What what we're doing and what regions we're covering?
Excuse me, Ms. Daniel, would you have Mr. Petraskey read that into record, please?
I'm sorry, I'm Mr. Petraskey. Would you read the Resolution twenty-seven dash twenty twenty-one into the record?
Sure. Of Resolution twenty-seven of twenty twenty-one is a resolution authorizing the submission of an AARP Community Challenge twenty twenty-one grant application to fund the purchase and installation of benches around the capital area greenbelt.
So good, um, Mr. Baker or Ms. Ballmer, um, give a brief description of, you know, how many benches, what they're costing a piece. Um, what areas in particular, um, they'll be placed in, et cetera, et cetera.
All right, so um, we are requesting a AARP grant for thirty-nine thousand, seven hundred and sixty dollars uh, for benches throughout the city, especially uh, in areas around the greenbelt. Um, our current city budget allows us to put eighteen thousand dollars into the purchasing of city benches. Um, this grant requires that we get um, the public buy-in, which we've, you know, are absolutely doing one way or the other, whether we get the grant or not. Uh, so the exact amount per bench is not known yet. Uh, because we have information circulating right now uh, in the public, you know, requesting their input on the different options that they have, uh, bench-wise. Um, you know, we're we're looking at roughly uh, thirty-two benches. We're we're trying to purchase uh, with the grant. Um, and you know, again, those those locations are not set in stone, but we would like to put them um, you know, around the greenbelt and then in some of our parks throughout the city.
Um, and what's the timeframe for uh, getting a response from AARP?
Uh, Rebecca, that would really be your your as far as response.
Absolutely. Can can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, good, good. Okay, sorry, I'm having, I'm having a lot of trouble zooming in, so I'm calling in. So part of the um, sort of mystery of the AARP grant and and the appeal is that it's this uh, very quick acting thing. Uh, it's like quick rising bread. Um, we will get in, we will have an answer. It's it's due in a few weeks and then we'll have an answer in a few months, and then we have three months actually to to um, conduct the entire project. So we have to have the whole project done by about November of twenty twenty-one. Um, we've tried for this grant a couple of times in the past, and we haven't been successful because we haven't been able to put forward a project that conforms to the timing of this particular kind of grant. So we should know in the summertime if we get the funding, and then we have to implement very quickly and complete the entire project within, like I said, within three months.
Okay. Um, any other, uh, any, anything else we should know about the grant application or the grant process?
Um, just that if we do get money from AARP, they they really prize uh, being recognized. So we might think about putting, you know, a plaque on a bench or something like that. It's just to let people know that they are the ones who, you know, made these benches possible. Otherwise, it's it's pretty straightforward as far as grants go.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, so I'll go ahead and open this up to questions for my colleagues. I'll start with Councilman Majors.
Sorry, yes, uh, no questions. This is uh, pretty straightforward for me.
Uh, Councilwoman Allen.
Likewise, agree. No questions.
Okay, uh, President Williams.
I see, um, Rebecca, that you're gonna uh, place these benches around the greenbelt. Will any of these benches be around the senior citizen centers that we have here in the city? Will you place any of them around that area?
I'm gonna bounce that to Dave, who has a better sense of where his group wants to, his department wants to put the benches.
Okay, Dave, will you place these benches around some of the senior citizens' buildings, our units?
I I mean, I think that, um, a- again, it really depends on the amount of benches we're able to purchase. Uh, but because this is an AARP grant, I I couldn't imagine why we would not focus on some of this.
Why I was asking.
Yeah, exactly. So I I think that that's that's definitely, um, that that's part of the community engagement. Part of this, you know, where they're going to say, we'd like to see them here. But yeah, I I think that that's that's a great idea. And uh, it 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 should definitely happen uh, in in one way, shape, or form.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Uh, Councilman Madison.
No questions for me, thanks.
Councilman Bowers.
I don't have any questions. Thank you.
I think that's it for for this resolution then. Um, I would recommend that this be placed on the agenda.
We now will move on to Building and Housing Committee. Ms. Bowers.
Thank you, President Williams. Um, I'm going to begin with an update uh, on the Broad Street Market Alliance Board's work. Um, I'd like to thank Executive Director Josh Housman and Amy Hill for their assistance in ensuring I was prepared for this uh, report this evening. I'm sure if there's anything I've missed, Councilman Majors will assist. So the information I'm sharing tonight is a twenty twenty operations review that was shared by Mr. Housman during our February meeting. So twenty twenty proved to be a challenging year for the historic Broad Street Market with the arrival of the COVID nineteen pandemic. At the end of the first quarter, after a very promising January and February. The pandemic forced the vendors of the market and market leadership to adapt a new and uncharted business model while maintaining the integrity of the market and ensuring the continued success of thirty-eight small businesses. In terms of vendor roster, the market began twenty twenty at full capacity. Due to the pandemic and natural attrition, we lost five vendors throughout the year. The outgoing vendors from twenty twenty were Radish and Rye Food Hub was pandemic-related. Urban Churn Ice Cream, they opened a new location and consolidated their business. Mostly Toasted retired. Sandwiches by Shakedown was pandemic-related as well. And Kebab House retired as well. As of uh, February, there were two vacancies. Uh, but they do expect to be at full capacity by May of this year. In terms of their financial health, despite the numerous setbacks and operating guidelines that impacted business, the Broad Street Market ended the year in a good position financially, with net revenue equal to twenty nineteen. Uh, just a few notes relative to the financial health. Vendors impacted by COVID nineteen operating restrictions and shutdowns were waived one month of rental fees in the second quarter. This impacted thirty-one of the thirty-eight businesses. This revenue loss was offset by a Payroll Protection Program grant and another grant from Impact Harrisburg totaling twenty-seven thousand dollars. Most vendors also benefited individually from various loan and grant opportunities, most notably from the Impact Harrisburg grant. In most cases, guidance was provided in-house during the application process. Um, businesses at the market have remained steady with many vendors uh, reporting back-to-back record sales weeks, as well as increased customer counts. All vendor rental fees are current, with the exception of one business. Uh, facilities maintenance, due to the uncertain business climate of twenty twenty, no large-scale capital improvement projects were launched. Focusing instead on routine maintenance only to maintain financial stability in case of business disruptions that would lead to a loss of revenue. Capital improvements um, have resumed in January of this year, uh, with a focus on updating uh, the improvement plan for twenty twenty-one. Looking forward, um, as challenging as twenty twenty was for all of us. Um, management is confident that uh, the market is positioned to continue serving uh, the customers and our community in twenty twenty and beyond. Um, they had a strong holiday season, which pushed most vendors into the new year with sales figures above historical first-quarter earnings. The upcoming Federal Courthouse Project, State Archives Building, and the numerous proposals of new residential pro- projects in the neighborhoods surrounding the market will ensure positive customer growth and continued success and vibrancy of the historic Broad Street Market. Um, Josh, along with all of the vendors, market staff, and customers look forward to large-scale rollouts of the COVID nineteen vaccine. Um, and resuming the market's role as a community hub and gathering space. Just one other note in relation to customers per week. An estimate was of about three thousand unique customers per market week. Um, some vendors report over eight hundred unique transactions each week. And some reach four, between four and five hundred, just on Saturdays alone. So thank you all very much for your continued support of the market. Um, they also are developing a strategic plan for twenty twenty-one through twenty twenty-four. They've outlined a clear vision, uh, to be a catalyst for a prosperous, healthy, and sustainable food system for our local communities. Our food producers and vendors thrive and expand. Access to farm and fresh food is provided. And the Broad Street Market builds, nourishes, and inspires community. Other strategic goals outlined within this strategic plan include offering a rewarding and safe food shopping experience while encouraging the consumption of local products, educating communities on the values, both nutritional, environmental, and economic of buying local, sustainably produced food and products. Foster a positive, uh, participative and collaborative environment and relationship for and with vendors. Finally, ensure a sustainable, ethical, and financially secure market for future generations. So I just wanted to provide that update. Thank you, President Williams, for the opportunity to serve.
You're welcome. Thank you for the, the display of information that you've given. I was wondering how they were going to be conducting business during the COVID-19, and what precautions are they taking in place?
In terms of vendors, or what do you, in terms of customers?
Actually, between vendors and the customers.
I know that they've imposed a mask mandate for that. That is still in effect for everyone visiting the market. Looks like Councilman Majors has some insight as well.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Bowers.
Oh, yeah. And to Chair Bowers' point, we know a lot of the vendors have put up the proper protective protection between themselves and the public. There are also a few vendors that are doing either curbside or as contactless as they possibly can. So there are a few vendors that are serving only from the outside of the building versus inside the building to try and maintain that distance. But as, as some of the, the indoor gatherings numbers start, you know, changes start to occur, I think the market's trying to be as flexible as they can for all the vendors to still be able to operate within the facility.
Thank you, Mr. Majors and Ms. Bowers. I just wanted to make sure that the public was aware of what the Broad Street market was doing to as far as safety precautions for COVID-19. For those who did not have an opportunity to interact again, going to the market on a daily basis on Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. So thank you for that information.
You're welcome.
Ms. Bowers, you continue with your Building and Housing Committee?
Yes, thank you. So this evening, for the Building and Housing Committee, we will discuss Bill 16 of 2020, Bill 18 of 2020, and Bill 19 of 2020. I will go through each bill and share if there are any proposed amendments. We can discuss them and hopefully move forward. So first, we have Bill 16 of 2020. Mr. Petrowski, if you could please read that into the record.
Bill 16 of 2020 is an ordinance amending the codified ordinances of the City of Harrisburg, adding there to Title 12 entitled Affordable Housing, establishing incentives for the development of affordable dwelling units through the use of affordable housing development certifications and agreements, authorizing the promulgation of rules and regulations to establish and maintain affordable housing programs, and imposing fines and penalties for willful noncompliance with program requirements and agreements.
Thank you. There are no proposed amendments for Bill 16. Just a reminder, this establishes our affordable housing program. It is the focal point of the legislative package. I did want to go back. I know in previous work sessions, when discussing this bill, council members had some questions and concerns relative to the definition of affordable housing. We also had some discussion about the qualifying percentage of participation for the program, which was outlined at 20%. So I just wanted to review some of those things and discuss why there are currently no amendments. And then I'll entertain questions and hopefully gain some support from, I see Ms. Williams is still present, hoping to gain some of her expertise relative to HUD guidelines. So the qualifying condition is line 119. It's Section 12-101.5, a subsection A, which notes that the minimum number of affordable housing dwelling units shall be a minimum of 20% of the developer's market rate dwelling unit count for the proposed affordable housing development. You know, initially, I was a cheerleader for trying to increase this amount to 30%, but in going back to the research, the range that is, I guess, most acceptable in the field is between 5 and 20%. So we are at our max there. In fact, it's really higher than some neighboring municipalities who are excelling in this area. I wanted to note that. The goal, again, is to really bridge the gap between our residents and the developers. If we set this threshold too high, it's not realistic for the developers to meet. If we set it too low, it's not realistic and really affordable for our residents. As you all know, our target households are low-income and workforce or moderate-income households. Those are synonymous. And per HUD guidelines, we have to meet two criteria. We have to include the median family income and review the HUD income limit. In terms of the definition for affordable housing, our, the city's definition is in alignment with HUD's definition. And that's because it's the most consistent method to operate under. If at any point we decide to add funding to this program, well, in the future, we would already be in compliance with HUD. So that's like one checkmark off of their massive benchmarks that we have to meet, that we would already be in compliance there. Another note, HUD's breakdown is per person, and it allows us to meet the needs of the people in the household. So that includes adults and children. I believe Ms. Williams has a chart that outlines the extremely low, very low, and then the low and moderate. So Ms. Williams, if you wouldn't mind helping me explain this a little bit better, I think, I don't know if...
You did an excellent job. You did an excellent job. So I'm gonna try to do this for the first time. Share screen.
Okay.
Okay. I think I'm doing this right. Okay. So here we go. This is the mandated HUD guidelines for the income limits. Up at the top, you will see the family size. If it goes from 1 through 8, and anything above, it's if they make, if there's one person per household, if they make less than $17,850 or less, they are in the percentile of 0 to 30% median family income. That's what the MFI stands for. If it's, if they make over the $17,851 through $29,750, they are between the 31 to 50 percentile median family income. And then, as you can see, if they're over 79, or 29,751, and again, I'm only giving the family size of one. You, if you go down, you can always, if they have a family of five, and let's say they make less than $45,900, they fall into the 31 and 50 percentile of median family income, and so forth, and so forth, and so on. Harrisburg is under the 71 percentile LMI, low mod income. So not a lot of families do, are making over that threshold of, let's say, for a family size of five, over $45,000. Most of the time, they're making between 0 to 30% of MFI. I did want to also point out, in the next month, they should be giving new income limits for 2021. It's still 2020. As of right now, they did receive them, but they had, HUD has yet to approve them. So they will be changing, and I say, like, May, May, end of May, beginning, middle of May, they should be changing for the 2021 new income limits.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Williams. If you wouldn't mind, do you see the, the, I don't know if everybody can clearly see the chart. Do you see at the bottom, the right, the bottom right-hand corner of your screen where you can zoom in and make the image?
Okay.
Larger?
Yeah.
Okay, I don't know if that...
Is that good?
A little bit more.
Okay.
Okay. Is that, can everybody see that clear now?
Want me to do it a little bigger?
Yes, I think. Can everybody see that? I just didn't want to miss this point because I know we spent a lot of time talking about the definition, and we talked about it earlier in the public hearing. So I just wanted to be clear on why we were maintaining the definition and the median family income limit. Are there any questions on this part while we have Ms. Williams in the chart?
Yes, I do have a question, Chair Bowers.
Okay, go ahead.
And, okay, thanks. And thank you for this, Ms. Williams. So looking at the, you know, at affordable housing, and we're looking at these charts, are we, so are, is the definition, we're bound to the limits that are here? Or are they, or is the median family income based upon either the HUD definition that's, I guess, used across the country? Or are we, can we, can we utilize the, are we utilizing the MSA for Harrisburg? I mean, excuse me, MSA for our region, or the median family income for either Dolphin County or the City of Harrisburg? Because all those are a little bit different. And when we're trying to get to affordable, I think, to some of the points that we've talked about previously, affordability is, you know, you know, since there's no super-clear definition, even with HUD, you know, when I'm on their glossary, it's, it can be moved a little bit. But making it as focused for our community might help us as we're looking to try and, you know, figure out how to ensure that the folks that need the assistance the most can receive it. So I'm just trying to make sure that we're, we're defining it clear for our area, or are we bound to some of the federal requirements?
Sure. So this, these income limits here are for the Harrisburg through Carlisle area only. These are mandated. By any time you use federal funds, this is mandated. We have to use it. If you do not use federal funds, you do not have to go by the income limits that they have set. But in the future, if you would like to use it, it would be strongly advised that you would use the, you know, what has been assigned for our area, which, again, is the Harrisburg, Carlisle, Pennsylvania area.
Okay, so these are, so the numbers on the screen are the Harrisburg, Carlisle, MSA.
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for Ms. Williams while we have the chart in front of us? Thank you, Ms. Williams. I appreciate you hearing the screen and helping me explain what I now understand better.
You're welcome.
What I wanted to bring to everyone's attention. So the definition as written in Bill 16 of affordable housing is housing which is available for rent to low-income and workforce households as defined herein and costs no more than 30% of household income. I would also like to note, so anything above 30% of someone's income becomes cost burden. Their housing becomes cost burden. I also wanted to note the definition of rent. Money paid by a tenant including any essential utilities such as gas and electric in exchange for the exclusive use and enjoyment of a dwelling unit. It does not include nonessential utilities such as phone, cable, satellite, or internet service. I wanted to note that definition because in HUD's definition, it notes utilities. So I wanted to note that we were, we did have a definition that included our essential utility there. I didn't have any other notes on Bill 16. Are there any other questions, comments, concerns? As I mentioned, at this time, we have no proposed amendment. Council President Williams?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Bowers. I'm a little concerned about the enforcement for the developers who receive a certificate of qualifications who was in violation. Have we determined who would be doing the enforcement part?
Not to my knowledge. Let me see if...
I know we talked about having someone from codes, but I don't think we need to utilize the code officers because they don't know the HUD regulations. And how can they impose fines if they're, they're not aware about the HUD regulations and whether or not developer would be in noncompliance? Should we not utilize someone in the Building and Housing Department?
President Williams?
Yes.
So upon the passage of an ordinance such as this, essentially, the administration would determine who should enforce based on availability, what training is required to enforce. But so once a law is passed, the obligation of the administration is to carry it out. And so, you know, whether it's codes, whether it's someone else, whether it's new employees, you know, it depends on the whole package and the budget. But, you know, obviously, training would be required to properly enforce it, as would the creation after an ordinance is in place of all the forms, applications, and those things that go with a new program. So council legislates, this is what the city's gonna do, and the administration has to come up with how to do it, you know, both financially and in all the operational parts.
Well, certainly, we have a concern as the council members and as the legislative body who's going to enforce a bill that we're enacting.
Sure. But I'm saying, I think, I think what has to be is that, that, once council mandates that this is happening, then people have to pull it apart to say, how will it happen? What departments will be involved? You know, what forms will need to exist? What things will have to be added to both the city, city electronic system and the AOPC in order to enforce if fines are involved? All of those pieces are, it always takes a while to set a program up once it's in place. It's got a lot of movement parts. And, you know, and I would encourage that council and administration down the road would have to work together to satisfy that the program works as it's getting it off the ground. So I think it's long, long, long from the last discussion of it. It really is the beginning of the discussion of, because there'll be things that'll come back with a budget, I assume, to do the enforcement, where you'll have, where is the money going? Who's responsibility of it? Are there new job descriptions? All of those things. It's not like anyone's desk isn't full right now in codes or anywhere else with work.
Exactly. They have hands full with everything's going on in the last year or two. So I don't know. And then, does the coenforcement officers know about, as I indicate, HUD regulations? So that they can, they can impose those fines?
Right. It is, it would be a new day in the sense that it would be a whole new legislative process and regulatory process that goes into place to make it happen.
Well, it's no sense in doing legislation on the Bill 16 where we establish affordable housing and we don't have the correct individual enforcing that violations.
So...
Violations from the developers?
Right. But first, you have to have the program adopted legislatively in order to then figure out who has to do what.
Well, I'm just concerned that the individual person that they would choose would not be the right person, and I would hope that that individual continues to train through the Housing and Urban Development. I'd just like to see who's good, before I vote on that, I'd like to see who would be doing the enforcement. So administration needs to probably come to the table and try to discuss that. Thank you, Neil. That's my, that's my comment. I want the affordable, the Bill 16 to work, but I also want to hold the developers accountable. I'm not going to give them a certificate of qualification, and they receive benefits, and we have nobody to enforce this. That's my comment. Thank you, Neil. Thank you, Ms. Bowers.
I just wanted to follow up real quick and just echo Councilwoman, or Council Presidents. I just wanted to follow up real quick and just echo, uh, Councilwoman, um, or Council President's, uh, comments there. But also, in terms of the enforcement, it's also how do we pay for, uh, this expanded enforcement as well? I think needs to be answered as well. What, what are the additional costs going to be to the city? Those are my questions as well. Thank you.
Any other questions on Bill sixteen? One other thing I I did fail to discuss, um, and. I think this amendment or potential amendment came out of, um, some community conversations. And public comment that we received relative to, um, incentives for our residents. And initially, I really wasn't sure if Bill sixteen was the best vehicle to add those incentives. Um, because I know that they're needed. So I just want to be clear that Bill sixteen is, um. One arm of the affordable housing program. It establishes the program and it i- it is geared toward developers. Another arm will be relative to our incentives for residents. Um, I'm looking forward to, uh, working with the administration to establish a. Uh, program where we can partner perhaps with a community-based organization that is, um. Doing some of the incentives that we're interested in well. Um, and so I look forward to revisiting that, but I I did not want it to get lost. Because I know that there is a strong need for financial literacy, credit repair. Ensure that our residents are set up successfully to transition from. Uh, a transient rental population to homeowners who are here to drive and and. Keep their families in the city. So that is the goal. I just wanted to address that, uh, before moving to the next bill. Because I know that is something, uh, that we, we're all very, uh, conscious of. And we want to see something occur there. So it's not lost at all. President Williams?
Um, thank you, Ms. Bowers, and I, I, I understand your sentiments towards that, but I'm passionate as well as you about affordable housing. And I just don't want them to, uh, violate the agreement that we have in play, that we're going to put in place. Because they were saying that they may do twenty percent of, um, medium-low income housing, and they don't do that. And they don't get the same, if they don't do the same model for, for those who are above medium income. Now, I'm not sure if you're aware, but Secretary, we have a new Secretary of HUD. Marcia Fudge, who is looking at putting millions of dollars into cities for affordable housing. So I don't want us to be, you know, surprised when we have, um. Violations and we have nobody to enforce those violations. And I want to make sure that it's a incentive to our, our residents, but they have the same accommodations that others have on the, these different floors. You may have a developer do a townhouse or apartment complex, but it's not as suitable as the one upstairs. So I want them to have the same accommodations, and we hold them in, in violation. That's all.
No, I understand, and I'm, I'm well aware of, uh, Secretary Fudge's plans. I'm excited to see, um. For her rollout to assist like ours. So I think, I think we share the same goals, and of course, I, I. I want this program to be successful. I don't, I don't want to just implement it just to say I'm checking off a box. I know that affordable housing is being touted by many of the candidates. Uh, at, during this election cycle, but that's not my interest. I want to make sure that this program is sustainable. I don't want to get involved with the politics of it all. I want us, I want to ensure that this program is sustainable and that it, it works well for the residents of the city of Harrisburg.
Okay, and I understand that. I'm not into politics of it. I just want to make sure that it, it's sustainable and that we are able to enforce it. And that we receive, our residents receive, as I indicated, the same incentives. That's all.
Oh, they will, they will. That's not, that, that is not lost upon me at all.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any additional questions relative to Bill sixteen of twenty twenty?
Yes, um, yeah, so I just wanted to hear from the administration. Wh- what other methods of affordability did you l- look at and consider, and why did they fail? Um, as you know, the HUD guidelines are minimums, and HUD is never upset when we make things more affordable for folks. So what other metrics have you used, and why do you think those aren't usable for us?
I'm not sure if, um, Ms. Baldock can speak to this, or, um, Ms. Watson. I know she's on the line.
Good evening, everyone. Are you asking if we checked into anything other than HUD? Is that what your question is?
Right, right.
Okay, yes, um, we did. Of course, I looked at the, the county. And I looked at the city as well, looked at US Census, um, the Census Bureau to find out what that was. I did the calculations to see what the difference would be between us using HUD numbers, HUD calculations. And, um, also the, um, Census Bureau as well. And, um, I found HUD to be favorable. As I was sitting here, I was just thinking about even some reasons why, um, we should use HUD. And I wrote them down, so I'm just going to go quickly, um, through these. Um, number one, HUD has a wider range and a wider reach. HUD takes into consideration the number of people in the family. We know, family looks different from household to household. So we want to be able to accommodate them, you know, like, um, for people to be able to come together and put their money together. And make it work. And because we are looking at affordable and moderate income. What we found is from municipality to municip- municipality, that there is a whole group of people that we, we never even hit. And what HUD does is HUD goes through the whole thing from extremely, um, low income. To very low income, to low income, to moderate. So they cover everything. So wherever you are, and that's what this whole, uh, legislation is about, that wherever you are, you will find yourself on that HUD chart. No matter how low you are, from zero to thirty percent, and going on up to the eighty percent for low income. And then one hundred and twenty percent for, um, the moderate income. So I found that HUD was the best when I compared the, uh, calculations.
You are on mute, Councilwoman Daniel.
So I don't understand it because the city of Harrisburg's income is significantly lower than, like, median income is significantly lower than. Than the state, so, um, so, so. Census reflects the city of Harrisburg is having a higher median income than the.
The, 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 um, city of Harrisburg's, um, area median income is thirty-nine thousand something, something, something. So no, you're absolutely right there. But then what it boils down to is, then you have to look at. Okay, so. And let me finish my list, and then you'll understand, okay? So then I talked about the families and how families look different, so we get that advantage to combined incomes. Then, if we use city of Harrisburg's AMI of thirty-nine thousand six eighty-five. The maximum income for the program, because we're going to use, um, the one hundred and twenty percent of the AMI. So the maximum, um, income that a family can make is going to be forty-seven thousand six twenty-two. Which means that's your cap. If you make more than forty-seven thousand, if we use the city of Harrisburg and you make more than forty-seven thousand, then you do not qualify for the program. Now, if you, if we're trying to reach from low to moderate income, that's very important. Okay, so then also. If we use the city of Harrisburg, when I did the calculation, at the end of the day. Um, there was a six thousand dollar difference between HUD, HUD's numbers and, um. And the city's numbers, six thousand dollars difference. But when I did the calculation for the very low income, it came out to be. Um, two hundred and ninety-seven dollars per month that that person is going to be able to pay. To, for their housing, two hundred and ninety-seven dollars per month. And I think what, wh- what I'd like to just say to, for everyone to keep in mind is. Two hundred and ninety-seven dollars, so if the rent is seven hundred and fifty dollars, there's a gap that needs to be paid. You, you, you understand what I'm saying? That gap needs to be paid. So then who is that going to be paid by? That's why we're trying to incentivize. So what I found in doing my research, that in, with mo- most municipalities, they don't even hit the extremely low income.
Yeah, this program is offered extremely low.
Extremely low income. So then above that, everything else that you're looking for is on that HUD grid. Everything else is there.
Okay.
And, and it's also designed to meet the needs of the family. If you have four people in your home, it could be a husband and a wife and two children, or it could be four adults in the home. You, you understand what I'm saying? So whatever it is, is there.
That's it for me. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions on Bill sixteen?
Sorry, just, just one last question from me, um, Councilwoman Bowers, uh, Chair Bowers. On, hold on, let me make sure I have it right. Okay, um, so I guess I'm online, one twenty-two regarding the minimum number of, uh, affordable housing dwelling units. You mentioned that, um, I guess, that is defined, not in this bill, but in other areas where it's between, usually between five percent and twenty percent. Is what people go for. Um, I know in, in, in some conversations that have occurred, uh, you know, and even earlier today during our public hearing. They, the developer was mentioning, um, you know. Some of their goals were at ten percent, and we're looking to make our, our minimum twenty percent. Had, was there any thought given into, you know, maybe reducing that slightly, maybe to fifteen percent, say? And providing incentives above and beyond what the minimum incentive would be. So say the minimum incentive was fifteen percent, and if you hit twenty or thirty, there would be additional incentives, uh, as a part of the program. I'm just, just thinking out loud, not.
No, not within this bill.
Okay.
No.
Okay, that's it. Thank you.
In Bill, so. There is a higher threshold at twenty-five percent for parking relief. Um, but, but not in this bill, no.
Okay.
We would hope that they would be able to meet the twenty percent.
Oh, yeah. Now, like I said, I was just thinking out loud, um, you know, I think my, the goal, I'm, I'm here with the, the, the goal. I was just thinking if there was additional incentives provided at, you know, in increments, that we may get folks to come in at the fifteen. And then if they hit twenty, there was an incentive, they're twenty-five, but, uh, I understand, I understand where you're, where you are right now. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Okay, if there are, I don't, I don't see any other questions or comments on Bill sixteen of twenty twenty. So I would like to, um. Ask that Bill sixteen of twenty twenty be added to our agenda for our next legislative session, uh, for a formal vote. Moving on to Bill seventeen of twenty twenty, that's our zoning amendment and our bonus density, which we discussed during our public hearing. Prior to, um, this meeting, at this time, there are no proposed amendments. Are there any questions or concerns relative to Bill seventeen of twenty twenty? Seeing none, I would move to add Bill seventeen of twenty twenty to our next legislative agenda for a formal vote. Next, we have Bill eighteen of twenty twenty, and that is, uh, our street vacation bill. I do have, uh, an amendment to this bill on line seventy-nine and eighty. It is section nine dash one seventeen point four relative to minimum standards. Um, subsection F. The existing language reads, "Community engagement plan that must report on all community engagement related to the petition." The proposed amendment language reads, "Community engagement plan that must report on all community engagement related to the petition." The petitioner must hold at least, we're going to insert a number, public community meetings. Um, I know, President Williams, this was something that you were interested in seeing within this bill. I didn't know if you had, um, a number of public community meetings. You were thinking, is it at least one or a, a certain number? So I wanted to revisit that here.
At least, at least two, at least two, at the beginning of the year and the end, towards the end of the year. Thank you for putting that in there, for implementing it.
Oh, you're welcome. Thank you. This time, are there any questions on, um, the proposed amendment? Or any additional amendments to Bill eighteen? Okay, I don't see anyone else with comments. Thank you, President.
The woman Daniels?
Yeah.
This, it's Neil. You, you may want to, in between here and the next meeting, let us look at the definition of public community meeting.
Okay.
Um, for example, right now, you're on. A, a virtual platform. You know, with, some direction would need to be given to an applicant on what's expected of them. You know, how do they, how do they satisfy it?
Okay.
So, but, but the Law Bureau can work with you, Tiffany can work with you to come up with a definition, but just, there has to be some pragmatism to the thing. So it's not a, uh, amorphous standard.
I understand. Thank you for that.
No, I, 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 I agree, and I, I think, um. As we're looking at, at this, um, you know, because, you know. This will be to allow the, excuse me, them to, you know, move sort of, you know, quickly through the street vacation process. Um, you know, typically, not typically, but how other postings have been done in terms of, you know, changes to zoning amendments. Or, or, you know, changes at the planning board. Does, is, I think, to Neil's point, you know, or do, does it need to be posted? Does it, you know, who all needs to be invited within a certain area? I think if we could iron out some of that, that would, um. You know, give us a look, well, give myself a little bit of, um, of comfort. And then in terms of, uh, under the minimum standards, um, so part B about the, uh. Print, including their preliminary land development plan. Um, I guess that would be inclusive of any plans that they may have for any, uh, minority participation, uh, correct? So these are all the things that they would have to do for us to even consider moving them through a, uh, you know. A, I guess, technical, well, a, a sort of, uh, expedited process, correct?
Yes, it's, remember, it's not a guarantee, but it, it's just a helpful next step.
Correct.
Yes. Any other comments, concerns, Bill eighteen? I will work with, uh, Ms. Baldock to, um, develop a definition of a. develop a definition of a public community meeting. The final bill is Bill nineteen of twenty twenty, which is the LERTA amendment. Have an amendment. Line seventy-seven. And just for everyone's reference, the, this is the section five dash five oh three point three subsection B of the LERTA. It contains three criteria that are outlined for qualifying conditions. And criteria three is prevailing wage. So the existing language reads, it's line seventy-seven again, and it's subsection C two. Section five zero three dash three B shall not apply to qualified affordable housing development. The proposed amendment language read to section five zero three dash three B one and two shall not qualify, shall not apply, excuse me, to qualified affordable housing development. So one and two, just for your reference, are, one is minority business participation, and two is a a minimum of the fifteen percent of the labor force on any qualifying new construction or improvement project. Shall be made up of residents of the city. This just enacts the prevailing wage language. Are there any questions on Bill nineteen?
Want to make sure I understand. So with prevailing wage is still intact or could you just go over that? Yeah, okay.
It's still intact. So the other two criteria, remember, is three cri- criteria. So the other two, the minority participation and the local labor, they will not qualify, they they shall not apply to qualified affordable housing developments, but the prevailing wage will.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, comments, or concerns, Bill nineteen? Seeing none, I would like to request that Bill nineteen of twenty twenty be added to our next legislative agenda for a vote. This includes the work of the Building and Housing Committee.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Bowers. We now will move on to Community Economic Development Committee, Mr. Maxon.
Yes, thank you, President Williams. Okay. One of the agenda, uh, yeah. Could Mr. Prasowski read Resolution twenty-four of twenty twenty-one into the record?
So Resolution twenty-four of twenty twenty-one is a resolution approving a preliminary final land development plan to construct a multi-story mixed-use development featuring commercial space for a grocery store, restaurant, and coffee shop and offices, approximately eighty-five residential units, and approximately five hundred space parking garage in the block bounded by Boyd Street, North Fifth Street, Riley Street, and Fulton Street.
Okay, who is present from the administration to go over the plan?
Councilman Mattson, Jeffrey Knight, Planning Director here.
Jeffrey Knight, is the applicant present?
Uh, I did see Mr.
Yes.
Okay, they're there.
Could you state your name and title for the record, please?
Kevin Baird, Managing Partner.
Yeah, thank you. Mr. Knight, floor is yours.
Okay, so I believe we, Council had already discussed a fair bit about the project and in the consideration of the street vacations and the applicants provided a little bit of background. So I'll kind of reiterate some of the aspects of the project. This is a proposal to develop the block, four hundred block of Riley Street, bounded by Riley Street, Fulton Street, Boyd Street, and North Fifth Street. Uh, and the project proposes a mixed-use building that is essentially centered around approximately five hundred parking space garage in the center of the construction that would be accessed as entryway from Fulton Street and egress onto North Fifth Street. And then wrapping around the exterior will be a grocery store proposal, a proposed grocery store, restaurant, and coffee shop, as well as apartment units on the upper floors, which will front the Riley Street, North Fifth Street, and Boyd Street frontages. Um, I believe the initial proposal was for eighty-five residential units, but I think the applicant has indicated there might be upwards of a hundred or so, depending on how the eventual project works itself out. This project, you know, will, as the applicant noted previously, will have all of the necessary parking to meet the requirements of the needs on site, but will have an additional approximately two hundred or so, or upward, or even more than that, spaces to accommodate, you know, uses in the surrounding neighborhood, specifically the Federal Courthouse Building, two blocks away to the east. You know, the applicant has worked pretty closely with multiple members of the administration, including myself, city engineer, Wayne Martin, Mark Booley, and others, to ensure that as the design evolves, they're getting feedback from us to make sure that, you know, all the considerations that are out there, you know, loading areas, utility connections, stormwater management, are front and center kind of throughout the process so that we can make sure the project is good for both the developer and for the city and the community. And we think that the design that that is proposed at this point does that very well. You know, again, the the grocery store on site is something that the community has asked for, you know, as far back as the initial conference of plan, public engagement back in twenty fifteen. So getting one on, getting one in this project is, you know, a pretty big addition. Uh, the additional parking to address onsite uses, as well as the Federal Courthouse, is obviously important as well. The changes to actually have space or residential units fronting what will be the Boyd Street Urban Meadow are a good change. The lobby to that building will actually be on the Boyd Street Urban Meadow side as well. Uh, so it will really help to activate that space and, you know, have a kind of the eyes on the street to make sure that that stretch of the Urban Meadow feels safe to people using it. And, you know, they're working, you know, not only with the city, but with some other developers on, you know, meeting some of the larger issues like the stormwater management aspect. So all in all, it's a, you know, ambitious, but I think really good project. It's been well designed. We appreciate the applicant's coordination with the city throughout this process. Uh, and with that being said, the Planning Bureau and the Planning Commission both recommended that the request be approved with the following conditions. The applicant will receive approval from city council for the concurrently submitted street vacation application for the rights-of-way that run through the project site. The applicant will coordinate with the Department of Public Works to confirm the appropriate size and location of refuse collection on site. Uh, the applicant will continue coordination with the City Engineers Office. Comments regarding construction of sidewalks around the property, necessary signage and street markings for access to the site, driveways and curb cuts to the parking garage on site, and potential improvements to the street infrastructure surrounding the project site. Uh, the applicant will coordinate with the Planning Bureau on the number and location of bike racks around the site to meet the requirements of the zoning code and/or a bike storage location within the building for residents and employees and businesses on site to support bicycling as a method of travel as much as possible. Uh, and as the applicant said previously noted, they will have a bike storage room that's going to be in the northwest corner of the building along the Boyd Street Urban Meadow, so we're happy to see that. I think they're also supportive of bike racks around the outside for people who might just be popping into the restaurant or the coffee shop or the or the grocery store. Uh, the applicant will continue coordination with city staff on the installation of the Boyd Street Urban Meadow to ensure that the proposed development enhances that project and integrates access from that right-of-way. And as I noted, their recent iteration of the project, I think, does that in a very, a very good way. Uh, and then finally, the applicant will security necessary approvals from the city and the parking authority regarding the construction of a commercial parking structure within the competing parking area, and I think Mr. Baird can probably speak a little bit more to that in a bit. The Planning Bureau and the Planning Commission both recommend that the request be approved for the following reasons. Project proposes infill construction that reflects the character of the developing Sixth Street corridor to the east in terms of building, massing, use, and design, and prospective projects along Riley Street to the west. Location will take advantage of proximity to major corridors, both Riley Street and Sixth Street, to realize the full value of the project site. It will be designed with most of the proposed uses fronting Riley Street to ensure that impacts on the residential neighborhood to the north will be mitigated. And finally, the project will bring significant benefits to the neighborhood, including the removal of blighted buildings, the development of vacant lots, the activation of the Boyd Street Urban Meadow, the establishment of a long-sought grocery store, and the provision of enough parking to service the needs of proposed uses on site and those of the surrounding neighborhood. And if the conditions of the Plan Bureau are adopted, the project will have positive impacts on pedestrians and bicyclists, and will improve the streetscapes along the public rights-of-way that surround the site.
Thank you. I'm assuming you're finished?
Oh, yes.
The applicant have anything they'd like to add?
No, I thought that was very well presented. Thank you, Jeffrey.
All right, I had a couple of questions. So what I see that the applicant doesn't have an MWBE participation plan, uh, but I know in previous comments you mentioned that you plan on working with a local contractor. Care to touch on that?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, I think the GC will participate with local MBE, but my intention is to work with local MBE contractors as much as possible. The ones I've identified to date, Tara Castile, will participate in the workforce housing and on the four thirty Riley Street project. That will be coordinated from the GC level.
Okay. And have you worked at all with Jamal Jones, our small business coordinator?
I have not.
Okay. All right. I do think it would be good to get his feedback or comments on an outreach plan for MWBE participation. I do appreciate you working with a reputable contractor, uh, but I think I'd like to see a little bit more substance in the plan in terms of outreach before we move forward. Oh, did you have something you want to add? Okay. Uh, next question was, is there any time sensitivity with the project that we should be aware of?
Yeah, we've been, we've been sprinting right now. In order for the project to land the proposed GSA lease, we have to have the parking garage substantially completed uh, by late summer twenty twenty-two. So that's an extremely aggressive construction schedule. And in order for us to make that a reality, we would have to have full permitting and be ready to break ground by late July, early, early August. If we don't, if we cannot commit to the GSA for that lease and we don't, we don't land that lease, it it puts the financeability of the project in in greater peril. So.
I guess, just so Council has an understanding, I mean, when would that mean that we would have to approve the plan ideally?
So, you know, forgive me. That's why I hired Charles here. My experience i- i- is in Philadelphia in terms of process and timeline. But, you know, I would think, you know, upon approval tonight, I'm sure there's a thirty-day appeal process. Once that, you know, completes, we're looking at probably, you know, fifteen to twenty weeks of design before we can submit for permits, so, you know, we're, we're right at the wire here.
Okay. Okay, thank you for that. Anything else on the timescape or time sensitivity?
Uh, that's what keeps me up at night.
Okay, fair enough. All right, thank you for the clarification there. Um, I did see that the city engineer was still reviewing the project. Is is Wayne still on? Do you have anything you'd like to add?
Okay, I guess he's not. I'm sorry, I am here. I'm having a little computer issues. No, I, we continue to work with them, with the developer. This one in particular involves a project, we have the adjacent project of the Urban Meadow, and so utilities, you know, there's could be a joint benefit there of some utility relocations, and so that, um, that, you know, unfortunately, utilities are often the critical path, but, um, no, there, you know, there's some things as far as the traffic, the traffic analysis and things that, you know, we just have to tie up, but they have an engineer on board, and we've been coordinating with them closely, provided them with some of the data we've already gathered. And, yeah, I'm not seeing any, anything a- any issues, just just have to cross our Ts and dot our Is.
Okay, thank you for that.
Yep.
So I know that there's another part that mentioned the applicant has not provided information regarding the economic development impact. And I guess I just want clarification as to, is is that something that we can work on our our end? Because I do think tracking the economic impact is kind of critical, particularly given the amount of activity in this area. Um, I think it'd be helpful from understanding from procedure standpoint and policy standpoint, these impacts. So I don't know if that's on the applicant or if someone from the administration can chime in on that piece, but I think that's critical, given the amount of activity we're seeing in that area.
Yeah, and and maybe the applicant can speak a little bit to this, but in the economic analysis section of the application, uh, you know, I think a lot of it is dependent on exactly how the project shakes out. You know, this has undergone a couple iterations as far as the layout. At one point, the access to the garage was going to be from Riley Street, and now it's going to be from Fulton Street exiting onto North Fifth Street, and, you know, the grocery store footprint was shrunk a little, but the residential footprint has grown a little bit. So I think it probably made it very difficult to determine exactly what that construction value and total value of the project was going to be. Uh, with regard to the real estate taxes paid, I really, I don't have an analysis of that, and perhaps the development team can do that, but I would note that a good amount of the properties were owned by the HRA. So obviously, you know, those aren't paying real estate, and that will be a hundred percent increase, I guess, in taxes upon completion of the project. Uh, and then again, the number of construction jobs, I'm not exactly familiar with how all that stuff is estimated this early in the project, but I would guess it's probably a little uh, early to determine exactly how many jobs would be fleshed, would be created as part of that. So maybe Mr. Baird can speak a little bit more to that. I think we did an analysis there, and I hate to punt again, but Greg, Greg Holtzman, I I think, I think we did an analysis there. I I would say, you know, fifty to a hundred range, full-time jobs between grocery store employees, restaurant, coffee shop, security, parking lot, attendance, and security, maintenance. There's some real permanent job creation here, if you consider, you know, fifty to a hundred jobs.
Yeah. Do you have anything in writing you could share with Council?
Uh, I think we did an analysis there, but everything's pro forma right now, but I I think that, you know, we can, we can give you something, you know, real good faith estimate, i- if that's what you're looking for, happy to do that.
Yeah, no, that'd be fine, just so we can have that for consideration. Thank you. That that is it for my questions. I'll open it up to my colleagues at this stage, and I will start as if we were on the dais, and I will start with Councilwoman Daniels.
I don't have any questions.
Okay. Council majors?
Yes, so I just want to make sure. So, so that, you know, we have the, you mentioned about the GC is, BL, the GC, or they just doing the site plan?
They're just doing the engineering, civil engineering.
Okay.
We're gonna go out the bid, we're gonna go out the bid, hopefully in the next two weeks on preliminary drawings. We're using three local We're using three local general contractors. We're gonna give them all, you know, participation in the bid.
Okay. Yeah, and as Councilman Mattson mentioned, I think, said it's a little concerning to me that, you know, hopefully we'll get a little bit more prior to us being able to look at this on any MBE participation or even if, in terms of some of the GC work. Because again, we're looking at a, this is gonna be a pretty significant project, and we want to ensure that not just that there's MBE participation, but, you know, to the extent possible, we are looking at, you know, local residents, not just, you know, getting contracts, but actually doing the work on, on this. You know, you're, I think that, you know, like I said, you know, the timeline is, is, is condensed and, you know, a significant amount of your project is really, you know, is based upon, you know, the approval and then working with GSA for, for, for the parking. But, you know, I think from, from my perspective, ensuring that there is local participation in this project is, is paramount. And just based upon what we've received today, seems, you know, very, very slight on that. It's, you know, again, I think, you know, I appreciate the, the stuff that you're looking at workforce, but, you know, that's all, that's not this project. The project right now is, you know, more, that's not the project that you're, you're, you're presenting now. So I, I would, I would suggest and, you know, recommend that you work with, as Dave mentioned, Jamal Jones, who has a extensive list of contractors in our area, not just MBEs, but, you know, the contractors that we're gonna hire. Because we've, we've, we've experienced in the past with, you know, GSA, you know, it wasn't local folks getting the work. And, you know, we just want to ensure that our local community is able to, you know, benefit from any potential future developments in our, our area.
I appreciate that, counsel, and I'm happy to take that meeting. I would say that, you know, Doug Knight and I both, and Doug's in the meeting have been requesting less. It's, it's just a question of finding the right resources. So I'd be really happy to take that meeting. I appreciate you all for that. If you could send me contact information for that, I'd be looking to set something up as soon as possible.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I'll, I'll add, you know, understanding Mr. Baird, the time sensitivity, we'll get right on it with setting up that meeting. I'll work with President Williams on who else should be there from counsel and then from the administrative side to draft that plan as fast as.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. As I said, if you could work, just work with the, the city on finding someone who can help ensure that you're getting listed up. Sorry, I had a visitor. That you have, that you're working with some of the, the contractors in our area. That'd be really appreciated. Yep, sorry. No further comments.
Absolutely, thank you.
All right, Vice President Allen?
Yeah, I want to echo the sentiments of my colleagues on the participation. But I also want to point out, I think this is a really important project for the city. The area that it's in, in an area that's been underdeveloped, that I know has been targeted for development. But I think the mixed-use nature of the development is really significant and important. And I think the addition of grocery store, I think the addition of restaurant, business, jobs, I think those are all really good things for that area. So I just want to echo the challenge and the charge is, yeah, make sure you can increase that local maybe participation within the, the community. But also want to highlight, I, I do think this is a really important project for the city. So that's all I had to add for that. I will cede my time to my colleagues.
Appreciate that. Thank you. President Williams?
I don't have any, I don't have any questions, Mr. Mattson, I'm sorry. But just FYI, Jamal is no longer with the City of Harrisburg.
Oh.
He has left the city and he has taken another job at another company. So I'll have to sit down with someone else in the administration, maybe Mr. Woolley, and try to talk about what we need to do before this project takes fruition, okay?
Absolutely, that is news. Thank you. Okay.
You're welcome.
Have to get creative. Is Councilman Green, she's absent today, right? Yeah, all right. Councilman Bowers?
Thank you. I, I guess, given our conversation, I know we've, we've spoken on the phone and the discussion that we've held earlier in this meeting and in the public hearing. I just, just curious if you are open to the 20% of affordable housing units that we are proposing within our affordable housing program?
The answer to that is I'm absolutely open to it. But, you know, right now, I've got to find the resources. And I'm packing on $5.9 million worth of additional parking above and beyond code. And right now, it's not a financeable deal. So on value engineering, I've had these challenges before. And if I'm 5.9 out on parking, you know, I, I can be out on some additional affordable housing too. We'll figure it out. But I really want to have, you know, a working session with members of council, because I think there's some ideas, there's some ways to work together to create some revenue, lessen the blow, and create more capacity. So yes, I'm absolutely open to it. Yes.
Thank you. That was my only question. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Councilman Bowers. Was there any other additional comments or questions? Okay, hearing none. Mr. Baird, we'd like to see the project succeed. We'd like to work with you on accomplishing some of the goals that we've mentioned. So I will be in touch. And I will, again, we'll be working with President Williams and the administration to set up that working meeting with you. And we'll work on, hopefully figuring something out to check off the boxes we'd like and get the project moving forward.
That's excellent.
Okay, hearing that, I will hold on moving it to the next legislative session until we've had this meeting and figure out a plan moving forward. But hopefully, we can get something done quickly, so we can move for a vote as quick as possible.
So you don't want to place it on the agenda for Tuesday? You want to hold off?
I don't, I'd like us to, I, I believe I'm available to have the meeting tomorrow if, if possible, or whatever we need to do. But I, I really would like to see us hash some of this stuff out before we put it up for a vote Tuesday. So I don't know if Tuesday is enough time.
Okay, okay. Thank you, Mr. Mattson.
Madam President, Mr. Mattson? Yeah. Just to be fair to Mr. Baird, because I think he said his clock was 15 to 20 weeks. And it's July or late August. I mean, May, June, and July is your 12 weeks right there, if you're going the fourth week in April. And so you're literally cutting out three weeks of the process for getting the permitting done and the financing lined up. So just.
Well, okay, is there, I know we've done this in the past. Is it possible to approve it with certain conditions?
Sure, sure, sure. A, a good condition would be to have that, that type of meeting immediately afterwards. It would certainly be a condition of issuing any permits. And that would really be the better way to put it. It gives Kevin the ability to move forward, but yet he can't break ground until either of those meetings are successful.
Okay, so why don't we move it forward for a vote for Tuesday? Let's have that meeting ASAP and then work out these conditions to present to council, hopefully a little bit before they vote, we vote for it on Tuesday. Is there any objections there?
I just, I guess I'm just, you know, confused here, because you're trying to vote on this. And what if the meeting doesn't come before Tuesday? What if everyone's not in, you know, does not have the time slot to meet on before Tuesday? You want these, these incentives to be put in place, don't you?
I do, but I guess it sounds like there's all hypers time sensitivity to the project. So if, if, I mean, I don't live in this, I don't, you know, know all the regulations and time for development projects like this. But if, I mean, can it go into the next legislative session?
A three-week delay would kill the project.
Two-week delay?
Yeah, he said, I mean, essentially, it sounds like it has to happen now.
So, so I, I think what Mr. Sir was saying, counsel for Mr. Baird, was that both can happen. That is, on Tuesday, when you vote, you put conditions on the vote, so that the permits themselves don't get issued. But he has to start the process to get to the permits. So those meetings happen in between the two, but the permits will not allow to be issued with the condition as it meant. So you can satisfy both of the provisions you're talking about, like, but you don't have to have them all done by Tuesday. But on Tuesday, you, you instill those conditions into the resolution. And then their process to get themselves moving keeps going, but that process now includes the conditions you're adding on Tuesday that have to get satisfied. So the meetings you're talking about, those type of things work through.
That sounds like a fair compromise to me from my perspective, but I'll defer to my colleagues if they have any objections.
I have no objections to that.
President Williams?
I have no objections.
Okay. Sounds like that's the plan moving forward, is we'll work with the applicant and the administration to figure out these conditions upon approval. And we'll have that meeting sooner rather than later.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hearing that, we'll, well, again, given the conditions and everything, we'll move the resolution for vote for approval to next Tuesday.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mattson.
Thank you. And that concludes the committee business or community and economic business for this session. Thank you.
You're welcome. Mr. Petrowski, is there any public comment at this time?
Anyone would like to submit final public comments before adjournment, if you please raise your hand. If you're calling in, you can do so by hitting star nine. A second call for public comments. Okay, we have a public comments.
Okay.
From Ms. Parsons, please identify yourself for the record.
Yes, I'm Pamela Parsons. I live on Holly Street near 18th. Wow, I'm really blown away by what I heard tonight. Yeah, Ben Allen, yeah, let's, let's have whatever development is that you think is good. Yes, that area of town has sat fallow for a very long time, and it was done purposely, purposely waiting for the courthouse to go in. And boy, now everybody sees, now everyone sees money to be made. I can't believe that you would actually go forward with, with so many unanswered questions. Yeah, I, I'm just disgusted by this whole process. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Petrowski, any additional comments, please?
Yes, we have another public comment. Please identify yourself for the record. You are unmuted.
My name is LeBron Jones. I live on Dairy Street. I wanted to say I listened this, this evening. I appreciate what you guys do. It seems pretty tough to keep that balance. I grew up in the city and I wanted to, I just wanted to say, don't, don't forget about us that kind of came back to this city and sacrificed and, you know, raised our families here. I hear a lot about people that need to help, you know, affordable housing. And, and, and I get that too. I just hope that it's balanced and it doesn't punish those of us that maybe don't need as much assistance. So I would just like to say that, to put that in your minds, you know, let's, let's do it for everybody in the city. So that nobody loses and everyone does their fair share. Thank you.
Anyone else, Mr. Petrowski?
Yes, we'll move on to the next public comment.
Thank you.
Mr. Jarrett? You are unmuted.
Okay, yeah, thanks. I just want to say a great proposal from the developer. I think it's a lot of investment in the city. My thanks to the city council. I, I, I know these things are very complicated, and there's a lot of moving parts to it. But I think it's in everybody's collective best interest to, you know, move this program forward right now, do the conditions. I'm sure you guys are all smart enough to, you know, manage whatever conditions you feel are necessary. And, you know, this is like tens of millions of dollars be invested in the city. And I'm sure you can manage the job creation and all the other things you're interested in. So with that, I, I appreciate you guys moving it forward to a full vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else, Mr. Petrowski?
Yes, we have one more hand raised.
Okay.
Telephone number calling in. Please identify yourself for the record. You are now unmuted. The telephone number ending 702, if you could please identify yourself for the record, you're unmuted. It's last call for a telephone number ending in 702. If you'd like to submit a public comment, you are unmuted. If you could please identify yourself.
Would you direct them to hit star nine so they can?
Yeah.
Please?
His hands are, the hands are already raised. It's just, and they're unmuted.
I know, I see that. Okay.
Do they need to hit star six, Kurt, now, or?
There they go.
Hello, number ended in 702. Are you there?
Okay, Mr. Petrowski, are they still on the line?
They are.
Okay. They have a problem connecting?
Yes, and if, if they're unable to connect for this meeting, if they would still like to submit public comments, they can submit the public comment to So public comment is spelled out, P U P, P U B L I C, C O M M E N T, at harrisburgpa.gov.
Okay, I'm gonna give him a couple minutes to see if he can get back on. Okay, Mr. Petrowski? They able to contact, connect?
No, they're unmuted. It's just, there's no audio, so I don't know how you want to proceed.
Pardon me, while we wait, may I go back to Bill 18? I noticed there was a note in the chat. I did not move to, add it to our agenda for next week for a vote, and I would like to do so. I believe that Ms. Baldock and I will have enough time to discuss the definition, and if you don't, I can just pull it, but I would like it added to the agenda.
Okay, will do.
Thank you.
How we doing, Mr. Petrowski? Are we successful?
Same, same situation. It, it's your call. I mean, they, they, they're unable to submit public, I guess, audio comment at this time. They are unmuted, but, you know, as I said, if they wanted to submit a email public comment, they can.
Is there any other public comment?
That is all.
Okay. Okay. Please advise him again what to do, Mr. Petrowski, so that he can relay his comment to us.
Or if you would like to submit a public comment via email to be provided for this meeting, the email again is publiccomment@harrisburgpa.gov. Again, it's P U B L I C, C O M M E N T, at harrisburgpa.gov.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Petrowski. Council members, we have a motion to adjourn, please.
Hello?
Have a second.
Second.
Thank you, meeting officially adjourned. Everyone have a good evening.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Good night.
Thank you.